Good morning and welcome to the Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. This proceeding is being broadcasted on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pinder. Three board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President.
Thank you, Shontae. Welcome, everybody. Apologize for being a little late. There's a lot of things happening here today. We just want to make sure we get everything done in the proper order and as it's supposed to be. So it takes a couple of extra minutes. But again, thank you all for being here. And for those of you in, you can't hear back there? Those of you who are in the overflow rooms, appreciate that. And, you know, we'll work it out so that you can, if you have comments you want to make, you'll be able to do that. Having started with all that, let's see, we Hang on one sec. Let me get one thing up that I want to take care of. Okay. There's, I know it's hard to tell because there are a lot of people involved in making all of this run smoothly because they do an incredible job for all of us. And I just want to mention because I think to a certain extent, it seems like it's all done easily and seamlessly and sort of just all happens to show up at the right time for the meeting that starts at 10 o'clock on Tuesdays. And I just wanted to thank, you know, Shontae Mitchell, who is the board executive and her staff, folks do this amazing job to get it all together, to take all the input from all the departments and put it out in a form that, you know, makes sense to the rest of us, at least we can attempt to make sense and understand it. But I don't think people fully appreciate all that's involved in that. And Shontae, you and the folks on your team, and let me just go through names for a quick second and say thank you to them because they do extraordinary work on very short timelines. And when various departments and agencies and folks who think that whatever they're doing is more important than what the rest of the world is doing approach us, we had 25 items that people wanted on last Thursday to be put on today's agenda. And it's not going to happen, obviously, for a lot of reasons. But they bend over backwards to try and make that happen whenever they can to accommodate the various departments. But as I said earlier, Shontae, who sits over there on our left, Clarice Ribeiro, Anna Morales, Ashley Phillips, Priscilla Latona, Catherine Otega are all folks who you never see or hear much about, but without them, this place wouldn't function. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you for making it all possible. And with that, now we'll go back to what we have to do here, which if you hadn't gotten organized and put together, we could skip all this. But we won't. Comments by commissioners. I think, Narit, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I'm going to save it for later in the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I'll just note that two weeks ago was supposed to be my last meeting, and here I am again. Unfortunately, we weren't tracking the fact that Wilma had a scheduled vacation, and we wanted to make sure that we had this meeting on time because of the importance to both the community and to the department. So I agreed with the mayor that I'd pinch-hit for one more meeting. So I'm so pleased to be here with you all today and to consider scatter good, which of course, we've all been tracking very closely, I mean, for me, for the last three years, for all of us, for several years now.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here, George. Thanks for being here.
The one more meeting is one in November?
No, this is literally going out with a bang. You know, this is
Okay. George, any other comments? Narit, no?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
We're going to go to item number one. We're taking them out of order, as we call them special, and move along. Item one is also known as Tillman, for those who follow it at home. Chris, we're getting on. You got, Greg, you did it?
Yes, I did.
So thank you for the opportunity to discuss item one. President Katz, so as you know, the GWR project, it's one of the largest recycle water projects in the state of California. And we've made tremendous progress so far, and that's as a direct result of the vision of this board and their leadership, and also of our key partners and stakeholders. And we do have, some of our key partners are here today, and that is representatives from LA Sanitation. President Steve Kang is here today with us, Commissioner Faith Mitchell, and also the general manager of LA San, Barbara Romero. So thank you for being here today. And also, on behalf of the water system, I want to recognize a few of our key stakeholders in the community who are with us here today and thank them for their support. Candace Dickens Russell, she's the CEO of Friends of the LA River is here. Connor Everts, who's a longtime environmental leader in Los Angeles and statewide, is also here. Steve Appleton, he's a key LA River advocate, is here today. And also Bruce Resnick, he's the executive director of LA Waterkeeper. They're all here today. And with that, I'd like to call up Jesus Gonzalez of my staff. He's the project manager for LADWP on the Tillman project. And also from LA San, Ryan Thea, and he's Jesus counterpart at LA San, and they're going to be making the presentation this morning.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here. I'm going to ask that you hold for one sec so we can ask for any public comment on the Tillman plant, the Tillman proposal project, and just that. If there's any public comments that people want to make on Tillman, now is the time to do that.
I have
Yeah. Shontae, you can call them out, please.
Yeah.
Shontae, let's say Shontae called them out.
Okay. The first speaker will be Andrea Leon Grossman, who will be followed by Fatima Carrera. After Fatima Carrera will be Mark Lopez. Andrea Leon Grossman, would you please approach? Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman. I'm a ratepayer. And I also want to talk today, and inspired by Melanie Winter, who just passed away. She was a true inspiration and the reason why I'm an environmental justice advocate. I want to remind the board commissioners that construction of the Tillman Recycle Water Project is the foundation of the groundwater replenishment project and was funded by tens of millions of federal money for the Bureau of Reclamation Funds specifically to provide replacement water to protect Mono Lake. DWP has never acknowledged the more than $100 million in state and federal funds made available to LA to share the cost of saving Mono Lake. This is a project that really goes to the heart of sustainability, and I hope that you approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speakers, please be mindful that you will have two minutes maximum to speak. The next speaker is Fatima Carrera, who will be followed by Mark Lopez. After Mark Lopez will be Itzel Flores Castillo Wang. Fatima Carrera?
Hello, my name is Fatima Carrera. I'm here on behalf of all the people that are currently struggling up in the area of Mono Lake, who heavily rely on water that comes down from Sierra. You know, but I'm also a ratepayer, and I just want to say that, you know, LA takes pride in leading a lot of environmental projects allegedly, but I think we're far from where we could be. We, every year, we see, you know, water, you know, whenever it rains, we see water just inundating our streets and rather than investing in recapturing this water and, you know, having systems that are more sustainable and allow LA to be dependent on our own water source, we're diverting it from far away. It's not sustainable in the long run. We see where, you know, this, our climate change is taking us. And unfortunately, the communities that will be affected by this are low-income communities who are already struggling with a myriad of other environmental issues. And so I'd really like to request that we, you know, preserve the ecosystem that is the beautiful Mono Lake and focus on how we can, how we can, you know, make our systems more sustainable here in the city. It's also disproportionate use of water. You know, our communities, lower-income communities, have used significantly less water than do other areas in the city, you know, more affluent, rich areas. So I think there's a lot of, a lot that can still be done in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Lopez, who will be followed by Itzel Flores Castillo Wang, and after Itzel will be John Garzide.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Mark Lopez. I'm with East Yard Communities for Environmental Justice. I'm the East Side Community Organizer and also resident of the East Side. Also, I grew up in the Mothers of East LA Santa Isabel, co-founded by my grandparents, Juana and Ricardo Gutierrez, an organization that has done a lot of good and healed a lot of harm in our communities and also up in the Mono Basin. So I'm here today in support of the groundwater replenishment project, which is doing good. We applaud LADWP for doing good. I think the next step is to heal the harm, right? And so when we look at water savings, when we look at the water stock here in LA, we have to also look up at Mono Lake. And so if we're not healing the harm, then the good we're trying to do here, it can feel like an empty gesture. For us in our communities, water insecurity is a huge concern we have. And so creating those water stocks locally, not relying on bringing water from so far away, is essential to the sustainability of our communities. And so we ask you to complete, close that loop, right? Do the good and heal the harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Itzel Flores Castillo Wang, who will be followed by John Garzide. After John Garzide will be Connor Everts.
Good morning. My name is Itzel Flores Castillo Wong, and I am a member of the East Side Membership with East Yard Communities for Environmental Justice. Today, I'm also here to support the water replenishment, the recycling project, because it's going to allow LA to be much more dependent on local water sources. And that is so important because I actually recently went to visit Mono Lake, and I was able to understand much more of the impacts that we're having by continuing to take water from there and not allowing it to get back to the 6,392 feet of water, the level that it should be at. As a resident of LA and especially someone who has been using water from LADWP for many years, I think it's, this is a very important step in us being able to depend on ourselves rather than depend on taking water from so many faraway places, which is causing impact and harm to them. So I do ask you to be able to continue coming up with more projects like these. I work with community members as well, and I know that they are willing and they are ready to be able to preserve water and conserve it. So I know that there's so much more that we can do here. And speaking of affluent communities, I think that having the pressure being put on low-income communities and saving water, that pressure should be done with the higher, with the higher-income communities who have pools and who have such big houses, and they can do so much change by reducing how much water they're using in those homes. But yeah, I'm just, I'm just here to just continue advocating for this. I don't want to be causing any more harm than needs to be done to other communities who have been grateful enough to give us that water for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Garzide, who will be followed by Connor Everts. After Connor will be Tiff Sanchez.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My name is John Garzide. I'm the policy director for Crop Swap LA. We are a South-based, South LA-based, community-based organization and nonprofit.
Mr. Garzide, could you speak up a little bit more? That podium actually raises, there's a little button on your right. It's like a comedy movie, How Slow Moves. But we all want to hear you.
All right. So our team installs and designs green spaces and urban farms that capture clean and reuse water and supports community resilience efforts. This meeting is actually a welcome respite as I finish a proposal for Measure R this week. I just want to express strong support for item N1 and the expansion of the Tillman Water Reclamation Plant. It's exactly the kind of forward-looking investment the city needs. Understanced, slated to deliver up to 40,000 acre-feet of new sustainable water supplies each year. My math is right. That amount translates to roughly nine gallons a day for every Angelino. Maybe not enough for a city that measures success in swimming pools, but it's a big deal if you're Mono Lake. I want to recognize the leadership of President Katz for already publicly linking this new water to the department's commitment to protect Mono Lake. By reducing the city's annual draw by 16,000 acre-feet, the lake can be restored to the critical ecological threshold of 6,392 feet. By formally committing a portion of this new water to Mono Lake, LADWP can take a pragmatic win-win approach, strengthening our local water supplies, security, while safeguarding one of California's most iconic natural ecosystems. It's a solution that balances innovation, the responsibility, reflects the kind of leadership Angelinos can be proud of. I urge the board to approve this proposal, continue exploring how the new Tillman capacity can help meet both our local and environmental commitments. Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Connor, come on down. Good to see you, Connor.
Good to see you, Richard. I feel like I'm in a slow-motion movie. All right. Thank you very much, Connor Everts, speaking for the Environmental Justice Coalition for Water, the Southern California Watershed Alliance, and others. I am in strong approval of the recycling plant that I've been working on, I guess, for 30 years. I want to thank David Pettyjohn for reminding me how old I am. I remember working with Tom Labonge when he was actually working for DWP, the PR program. And I'm going blank on the last name of the engineer, but we worked long and hard with the Mono Lake Committee to go out and support this in those days, and the term I will not use, it was misused, why we need this water. But for me, the missing link and the reason I'm really here at this point is two things. One is in honor of Melanie Winter. I just gave a word at Localizing California's Water, drove back from Mammoth to deliver it to her in the hospital. She didn't make it out, but she was an example of how we should make use of water both locally and understand where it came from, both Owens Valley and Mono Lake. So the missing link for me is that this water, especially with President Katz, August 8th piece in the LA Times, says we now have more water. You already should be not taking the water that you were required to do under the State Board, but now that there is more recycled water, let's dedicate that to the streams. I've seen Mono Lake during the white years as full as I've ever seen, and it's a beautiful thing. And for the people, like the Gutierrez family, four generations have gone up there, hundreds of people, youth have gone for education, let's make that education link to this project as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connor.
The next speaker will be Tiff Sanchez, who will be followed by Mary D. Nichols. After Mary will be Stephen Appleton.
I feel like we're going to be adjusting this back and forth. Give me a second. I think that's good. Good morning, everyone. It's nice to see a packed house today. I'm Tiff Sanchez. I'm the youth organizer on the east side of Los Angeles. I'm the organizer for East Yard Communities for Environmental Justice, and I'm here to talk about support for this recycling water facility. And it's also an opportunity to challenge us all. There's a bunch of people, smarty pants people here today, this morning, that have innovative ideas. So it's not only to support N1, but it's also to encourage folks to listen to the folks out in Mono Lake Basin, continue to work with them, continue to listen to their ideas. They have the solutions. And I think as residents, myself, I live just two blocks away. I want to encourage folks to take this opportunity to remind us that it's all of our responsibilities, especially in Los Angeles County. I think that it's important that we listen to, like, the indigenous folks up in Mono Lake Basin that are doing the work, have continually done the work, and the generations of folks here in LA that, you know, one of my coworkers, Mark Lopez here, his grandmother, I just want to give her a shout out, Juana Gutierrez. And I want to say that I think this is an opportunity to continue this trajectory. And because, you know, we don't take, you know, there's been conversations that we don't take that much water from Mono Lake, let's challenge ourselves to take less water and less water and less water, so we don't take any water from Mono Lake and to get that number back to 6,300 and, you know, whatever feet that, you know, we can see the Mono Lake touffes exist for another, you know, thousand years. So thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary D. Nichols, who will be followed by Stephen Appleton, then Charming Evelyn.
It's nice to see you, Mary. Thanks for coming.
Good morning, commissioners and staff and members of the public who are here. I came this morning because I wanted to add my voice to the many that are obviously already here, to thank and congratulate you for moving forward on this water recycling project. I was a commissioner many years ago, going back as far as, well, well before that, really, but I guess I finally left the commission in 2007. And at that time, this project was already under discussion, and the concept of relying on recycled water for new water supply was also very much under discussion and was, I think, widely accepted as the way forward. So it's great to see that it's actually now coming to fruition, and I want to congratulate you on having this happen on your watch. Also, just as a reminder, that this was and is viewed as a water security measure, a water supply measure. It is not primarily designed for the benefit of the environment. In fact, the word sustainability itself doesn't just encompass environmental sustainability, it encompasses the economy as well. And the security of this water supply is absolutely an important feature of it. So for me, the idea, which has been raised by the president and others of, if you will, as an act of karma, dedicating this new supply to shoring up and replacing water that's being taken from a part of our expanded ecosystem, which is in very poor shape, seems to me to be a good one. And I hope you will direct the staff through your own resolution and policy to make that happen. Thank you.
Mary, thank you very much for being here. And, you know, a lot of what many of us do has been inspired by what you've done. And so we appreciate your being here, and we appreciate the trails you've blazed, whether it was clean air, clean water, the fact that we could see mountains in Southern California on occasion. We all, we all owe a lot of that to Mary Nichols and the fight she's made over these years. And it's a real pleasure and honor to have you with us here today.
The next speaker is Stephen Appleton, who will be followed by Charming Evelyn. After Charming will be Rich Nigel.
I'll be brief. I just want to say, like so many are, this is really a generational project, and we see it in the representation of who's here. Both near and far away, these waters are all connected, and we also hear that in terms of the advocacy for waters taken from far away. But I also want to speak to where those waters are close by us. So as someone who's been very engaged in Los Angeles River, and there are NGOs here who have been deeply involved in this over the years, we also see the relationship between our local waters and local ecology and this project. And as a young public artist, I had a chance to work on the Metro Green Line. It was the first time where I saw an interaction between civic life and, say, transportation and opportunity of project I was able to do in Watts. I feel that same kind of opportunity here, where our local communities are really playing a role in how this project goes forward. We're having a dialogue with water far away and far, and next to us. And I just want to point out that, not only on a policy level, thank you, board, and thank you, everyone who's advocated for this, but on the level on the ground, the innovation of the engineers that are running this project, Ryan Thea at LA San, Jesus Gonzalez's role, and all the NGOs, that there's really a coming together. And I really appreciate that, and I thank you for your efforts, and let's, let's keep moving it.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Charming Evelyn. I chair the Water Committee for Sierra Club California and of course, for the Angeles Chapter, which covers Alien Orange County. I want to give a shout out to David Pettyjohn, who reminded me to come here today so that I could give comment and to support this. I also want to give a shout out to Evelyn Cortez Davis, who came to our Water Committee more than 10 years ago to ask for support for this project. And so we at Sierra Club, we do support direct portable reuse. We work very hard on the legislation, and we absolutely support this project. We also would like to remind this board that the people of Payanadu, the tribes are looking for tribal beneficial uses of the streams and tributaries of Mono Lake. And so we really hope that you will work in partner with the tribes to lessen the amount of water that you are taking from Mono Lake and the groundwater from the Owens Valley. Mark said it correctly. We have to repair the harm, and it starts with all of us here. I also want to give a shout out again to LADWP staff for their conservation efforts, but we can do more. I was at the LA Aqueduct with LADWP staff, and they mentioned we still use 101 to 102 gallons of water per day. State law requires 55. So what are we waiting for? We have to do this collectively. We all have to do it, and I thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Rich Nagel, followed by Greg Fisher. After Greg will be Martha Davis.
Good morning, President Katz, members of the board and staff. My name is Rich Nagel, Vice President of Jacobs and Your Design Builder. First, what I'd like to do, I know Janice is not here today, but I did want to give her a shout out, congratulations for her recent Visionary Leadership Award she accepted about three weeks ago for the AAAE Gala event. I actually recorded the inspiring acceptance speech, and when I have a pick-me-up day, I go back and actually watch it. It was pretty remarkable. From a personal standpoint, I've had the chance to see many water reuse projects for the past 30-plus years, and I have to say, I've seen a lot of successes and a lot of not-so-many. And I have to tell you that I witnessed this project from start to finish, and I've never seen your two agencies work as cooperatively as they have on this project. It's actually been met with decisiveness and a leadership at every level, and you really have to be commended for this particular job itself. The work on Tillman actually, for us, began truly on Valentine's Day 2023. That's a fact. We actually broke ground by Christmas 24. That is literally unheard of in this business, if you ask of any, any design builder. And it all has to do, we started with a concept that was 19 MGD. It went to 25, 30, and then hopefully today, it goes to 45 million gallons a day, all due to your executive leadership and especially all the boots-on-the-ground leaders, Ryan, Ron, Jesus, their teammates, the owners' advisors, and the NGO community have all come together on this. You also hosted two amazing outreach events, and I know a few You've also hosted two amazing outreach events, and I know a few of you have been there, and you actually grabbed your bobbleheads, right? And you know you've made the big time if you got your bobblehead right. Go Dodgers. We really look forward to 2027, and actually having a chance to taste that tasty purified water at the plant itself. And now I'd like to turn it over to our Executive Vice President, Greg Fisher. Thank you.
Rich, thank you. And I was going to say that the event we did out at the facility about a month ago was pretty impressive, and watching the whole operation and watching what your team's doing out there is something to be proud of, and we're glad to partner with you on it. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. I'm Greg Fisher with Jacobs, Executive Vice President. I just want to say how honored we are to be your design builder for both DWP and LA SAN. This has been a team that is unlike any other, and you should be very proud of, of what we're about to accomplish here. We are committed to work with your team collaboratively, collaboratively with the city, and we're confident that we're going to finish this project in 2027. That's a milestone that we should all be putting on our calendars and ready to celebrate. I want to thank the Board, and obviously Janice, and everybody else who's had their hand in the, in the pot to make this happen, for your leadership, your vision, and most importantly, to the entire project team led by both Ryan and Jesus, who will speak shortly, has been, you know, award-winning team, and I think this is something we should be honored to be part of. We look forward to celebrating with you in two years from now. And again, thank you for your time, and I look forward to your approval.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This is soon. We're getting, we're getting close.
The next. Martha?
This is a pretty exciting day, isn't it? Yes. Good morning. My name is Martha Davis, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Mono Lake Committee. We strongly support staff's recommendation to expand the groundwater replenishment project, which is expected to produce a whopping 40,000 acre feet of new water supplies annually. I am proud that I helped to secure the first Title 16 Bureau of Reclamation funding for the Tillman Recycled Water Plant, 1993. So I am particularly pleased today to see that the department's vision for what we then called the East Valley Project is finally being fulfilled. Not well-remembered is that Congress, through the passage of Public Law 102575, intended Mono Lake to be the primary beneficiary of the federal Title 16 investments in the Tillman East Valley Project, meaning that this recycled water would replace the department's Mono Basin diversions, so that Mono Lake would rise to the Water Board mandated protection level of 6392 feet. Let me read what the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Commissioner Dan Beard wrote to you, President Katz, in 1995. "Congress intended the Title 16 programs to be the replacement for the Mono Basin diversions, and its cost-sharing dollars became priority funding for this purpose. Today Mono Lake and its remarkable biodiversity and indigenous values is in trouble and urgently needs our help. LADWP needs to pause its Mono Basin diversions to comply with the 1994 Water Rights Decision, which requires the department to let Mono Lake rise to the healthy 6392 lake level. The additional amount, unexpected amount of water that will be produced by the groundwater replenishment project not only fulfills the original vision for the East Valley Project, it assures that LADWP has more than enough water here in Los Angeles to make up for the amount of water that will need to stay in the Mono Basin while the lake rises." And I have copies that I don't know sure to give to of the DW, of Dan Beard's correspondence with you, President Katz, and also his testimony before the State Water Resources Control Board at the Mono Lake decision. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
And thank you for your consistency and advocacy.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Natasha Villa, followed by Santira Pugliese. After Santira will be Lauren Rose. Natasha Villa?
I think they might have me down for the wrong item.
Okay.
It's supposed to be N1.
This is 1.
This is it.
I mean, H1, sorry.
H1?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Manahu, Anali Ne Santina Pugliese. Hi, George. Hi, Commissioner Katz. It's good to see you all up here. I'm from the Department of Water Protection, and I'm a core partner with the Owens Valley Indian Water Commission, and I feel so blessed to be a guest living there in Payahunadu. I woke up at 4:30 this morning to drive down here to be here with you all, took the journey with the water, because that's how urgent this is right now, and that's how important all this work is that Connor has been doing. I had the beautiful moment of meeting Melanie Winters at the recent Localizing Waters, or I'm sorry, Water Keepers event, and just, it's both inspiring and heartbreaking to be here today, to, to talk about this issue. And I'm so excited to hear that the words collaboration, and that this is hopefully going to bring more water back to the headwaters. I mean, at this point, as Brock Domon says a lot, we need all some brainwashing to clear our headwaters, so we can actually show up in a good way, because we're in a really hard place. You know, before I lived in Payahunadu, I, I lived here in LA, and I didn't ask where my water came from. I didn't ask what the true cost of my water was. Devastation of ecosystems, displacement of indigenous communities, that's the true cost. It's not your bill as ratepayers. And as someone who now lives in Payahunadu, which is owned more by Los Angeles than actually Inyo County, I just feel a responsibility to be here and really ask you, do you all understand the true costs of this water? And I ask you all to carry that with you today and think about that. I'm so, so grateful for Connor really inviting me to come down here today after the Localizing Waters event in Mammoth. I really want to be a part of the healing that's needed in our world. And we stood at Mono Lake the last month, and to be in a place where there should be water, and that LADWP has not even met the minimum commitment to refill those waters is unacceptable, and I wonder who holds you accountable? And what is the real cost is really my biggest concern. I urge you to continue to do this, and honestly, I urge you to reimagine how fast 30 years should not be how long we would have to wait for water to return to that lake. And I ask you to reimagine how fast we can get things done together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lauren Rose is the next speaker. After Lauren Rose will be Bruce Resnick. After Bruce will be Roberto Cabrales.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Rose, and I am the Water Justice Organizer for Friends of the Inyo. A special hello to Narit and George, who we see often up in the Eastern Sierra. It's nice to see you in this venue as well. Friends of the Inyo is a environmental nonprofit from the Eastern Sierra that's been working to support water justice, support returning more water to the Eastern Sierra, both in Mono Lake and in the broader Owens Valley, Payahunadu watershed area. And one of the issues that we've come across is that despite the fact that LADWP is doing a lot of work on developing its local water resources, we've struggled to get these commitments paired with reducing actual extraction from the Eastern Sierra, both Mono Lake and the broader Owens Valley. So this is really, really heartening to see that this 40,000 acre feet, which is an enormous amount of water, that is so, so exciting, that that will be paired with this commitment to let Mono Lake rise to the levels of that California Water Board mandated 6,392 feet. So we just applaud this pairing and hope that that goes all the way through in these next couple of years, and that the commitments to Mono Lake are, are finally met. That would be really, really exciting for us, and hopefully will set a trend for the rest of relations with the Eastern Sierra. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Resnick?
Just start organizing speakers by height. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Bruce Resnick, Executive Director of Los Angeles Waterkeeper, here to enthusiastically support this project, the expansion of Tillman and the groundwater replenishment. It has been a, long in the making, as you have heard, and, you know, only in LA could it sort of get maybe lost a little in the broader Pure Water LA and Pure Water SoCal. This is a massive, massive achievement. 45 MGD or 40,000 acre feet will make it one of the biggest recycling projects in not only the US but in the world. It is going to serve more than a half million Angelenos and nearly 40% of the city's population in the valley. And, and one of the great things is it keeps the water in the valley, being captured, treated, and then recharged, which eliminates a lot of the piping and pumping that can make these projects even more expensive, and unlike some of those other larger projects, which of course, we still strongly, strongly support. We don't have to wait 30 years, which we're hoping not to wait 30 or even a decade, but we're talking about just two or three years. And it really is, especially with the doubling of the size of win-win, where this project will allow us to maintain the flows currently in the LA River, which is so critical for ecology as well as recreation. And I know you're working with a lot of the stakeholders in this room, many have spoken, and obviously I too would be remiss to not mention Melanie Winter and her longtime advocacy for the LA River, and how much that is going to be missed. But it also, as Mary Nichols and others have mentioned, provides that critical water security and water resilience that we need in LA with a drought-proof source of local water. And lastly, in what most of the speakers have been talking about, it allows us to wean ourselves off and do that healing that is so critically necessary for Mono Lake and other waterways throughout the region. So thank you much for the opportunity. Thank everyone involved. It took all the leadership from all these folks at this Board, Board of Public Works, the staff I've been mentioning, General Manager Romero, and General Manager Canonis, their leadership was critical in getting everybody working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I just wanted to put a little bit in the elevator. Good morning, Board members, President Katz, and members of the Board. My name is Roberto Cabrales. I am the Southern California Program Co-Director in Wilmington with Communities for Our Better Environment, and we have several years that we've been taking a lot of our community members, thanks to my friend and brother, Mark Lopez, and, and the legacy of the Gonzalez Gutierrez family, I'm sorry. And through that connection, we've been able to make connections through our youth members and take folks to Mono Lake to learn about the water and, and the connection that we have with the Mono Basin. California has had an interesting relationship with water and water politics for many, for many years, and I think it's taken a lot of work for different individuals to make a change in, in how we procure our water for, for the Los Angeles Basin. And this water replenishment project is a way for us to get and procure water in different manners. I don't think we should wait for drought season to come back, for us to start thinking innovatively in how we get and secure water. I think it's a, it's a sad reality how California experiences different water cycles. And it always feels like, like, you know, we go in, in, in urgent mode when we are in extreme weather season. And this project is, is a way for us to secure water alternatively, not wait for those drought moments to come. So I just wanted to say how I support this effort, because we need to change our relationship with water, both here in Los Angeles and throughout the basin. So I just want to thank you for taking this opportunity, and I urge to support and vote on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last speaker for item N1 is Dr. Leah Garland.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Dr. Leah Garland. I'm an environmental advocate and ratepayer. First of all, I want to acknowledge the water ecology leadership of Melanie Winter. I am creating a film of her work based on interviews that I've conducted with her over this past year. And second, I want to encourage you to please support this project, and I want to acknowledge, thank you, Mr. President, Richard Katz, for your statement on August 8th in the LA Times on Mono Lake, when you suggested that this recycled water offset the water that needs to stay in Mono Lake during the transition period as the lake rises. So in short, please allow the surplus snow melt to please stay in Mono Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trump.
That was great. I'll gladly welcome more public comments if there's any more that haven't submitted in card. Good morning, President Katz, Commissioners. I'll admit, I'm lost for words. We did not expect that, but we're humbled by the clear support that not just the community partners have for the project, but the NGOs, our Board, it's just resounding to see and encouraging to see how much interest and support and collaboration there is behind the work that we're doing at Tillman. So just want to acknowledge again our, our guests for being here today, for speaking up and for voicing their support. It really is humbling to go by and I. That being said...
Jesus, can you try to speak into that mic a little bit more? I'm not sure if it's not on, or if it just needs to be closer to your mouth.
So with regard to the item at hand, the speaker's made reference to some of the key points, so I just want to emphasize those, just to frame the discussion. So of course, GWR is the largest active water project in the state of California. It's going to provide the city of LA with enough water for half a million people. We're one year into construction. As mentioned, we're, we're doing great. We're on track to finish the project in the next two years, again, making it the largest portable reuse project in the city of LA. But as mentioned, there's a great opportunity for the city of LA to advance the project and expand it and maximize the work that we're doing at Tillman, again, in collaboration with LA SAN. So what this slide is showing is the expansion. We have an opportunity to hit a grand slam. Of course, we're all raving after yesterday's big win, but there's a huge opportunity for us to expand the project, double its size, go from 25 MGD to 45 MGD, making it undoubtedly the largest water project in the state of California. Again, there's tremendous support for the project. We wanted to describe the project in a way that would connect with people, so we're, we wanted to show a video that does a really good job of describing the current work, the vision, and the current status of the project. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and play a video.
Thank you.
We have seen in the recent years a change in climate that has impacted our water supplies, and so we have to have flexibility in our system to manage those changes in climate and also have water resiliency here in the city of LA.
Creating a new local water source is huge. That is very exciting and very important, because it is important for us to be locally resilient.
The AWPF is going to produce some of the cleanest water in the world, so the technology is there. We've been able to innovate in ways to feel confident in our ability to produce the, going to be safe, high-quality water.
The Los Angeles Groundwater Replenishment Project here at the mall, Tillman, is a really important project for the city of LA. It will provide water for the quarter million Angelenos. It also supports the region and having what...
Good view of the valley for a moment.
So there's a couple of things that were mentioned in the video at the tail end. One was to highlight what we're trying to do as a One was to highlight what we're trying to do as a city to develop sustainable water supplies. What gives Ryan and I the most hope is what you see in terms of collaboration. It wasn't just DWP and L.A. San voicing its support and describing the need for the project, again, to become more water resilient, but just the abundance of partnerships and collaboration that we have as a community. So, the NGOs, our community partners, multiple agencies from across the region, all voicing their support behind the project. And what the project will achieve is shown here, again, a new water supply, enough water for half a million people. It will replenish our groundwater basins, which of course, will be critical during times of drought, and not to be overshadowed, but what's shown in pink, the amount of funding that we've received for the project. I want to emphasize this point, over four hundred million dollars have been secured by local, state, and federal partners to support the project. And what it means is our customers will stand to benefit with reduced rate impacts, a new water supply that'll be some of the cheapest water in our water portfolio. By comparison, when we come online with the project in two years, the cost of producing water from this project will be less expensive than purchased water from Metropolitan Water District. So, again, the fact that the project is cost-effective, it provides us a new water supply, and as mentioned by the speakers, it finds a balance between our need to develop new supplies and also thinking about the environment and the recreational benefits that the project will provide. Again, there's so much support behind the project and what we're doing at Tillman. So, with regard to the amendment, what we'd like to propose for your consideration is to modify the project, amend the project, or as we say, expand the project from what it looks like today to a much larger project. So, what you see here are some of the key aspects of what's currently being built out at Tillman. Again, one of the largest projects. By way of numbers, we're talking about twenty-five MGD that will be built in the next two years. And as shown on the photo on the bottom left, things are going great. We're ten months into construction. The team is on schedule. We're on track to finish the project in the next two years. But there is an opportunity for us to expand and to maximize. And here's where I'd like to just pause and thank this board for your leadership, your vision. Not to be forgotten, but back in March, this board met jointly with Public Works, so a joint board meeting where this topic was discussed. And the specific question that President Katz asked was whether or not we can maximize Tillman to produce more water. And so, Ryan and I were listening in, and of course, we're excited about the question being asked because we knew that there was an opportunity to expand. So, just want to pause and thank you, Public Works, this board, for just pushing us to do more, to think bigger, and to look for ways to augment and expanding what's already taking place out at Tillman. So, my job is easy. I get to work with Ryan on the project. He has the envious job of making this all happen. So, he's going to talk through some of the expansion, what it's going to produce and provide for the city of L.A.
Thanks, Jesus. My name is Ryan Thea. I'm with the L.A. Sanitation. So, the animation that you see on the left kind of overly simplified the expansion work that this amendment to the MOA is going to bring about. Basically, as Jesus mentioned, we're ten minutes into the construction. We have achieved approximately twenty percent completion. That includes utility relocation, grading, and some of the foundation work that you see in the animation. So, we talked about the joint meeting back in March. After we looked through those comments, we, you know, went straight into the drawing boards, and we started a device of plan to pretty much double the footprint by installing a full-size basement. That approach allowed us to proceed without needing to reopen the zoning and planning and building safety permits, other than the structural plan. So, in addition to expanding the basement, we also needed to reroute and upside some of the pipes and pumps with the existing footprint. So, we're going to see the animation in the next couple of slides. So, as of today, in the last few months of work, we've completed the excavation of it. We laid the foundation for the main building, for the basement. We're currently erecting cranes for the next phase. And with the hopeful approval of this MOA amendment, we will transition into two-shift today to complete the construction by 2027 before the Olympics. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Jesus to continue with the rest of the slides, some of the animations, and I'll come back at the end of it.
How long to get the project up to the fifty billion gallons?
We're still going to finish by the end of 2027.
Okay, even with the doubling, yeah.
Despite the expansion, and what I'll show here is another video that describes the actual work that's going to take place. President Katz answered your question. We're going to take the current structure and build a basement underneath it. So, adding essentially another floor to the megastructure, thereby allowing us to double the capacity of the treatment facility. So, what you see here is, again, these aren't renderings. This is based on an actual design of what's going to be built and what we will all see in the next two years. So, that's the exterior of the building. It's intentional for this to be open and accessible to the public. So, the windows are intentional for us to encourage the public to come in and see what's happening within the facility. Again, as mentioned in the video, it's going to be some of the highest quality water that's being produced in the country. So, we want to invite the public to come in and see what's happening at the AWPF. There's currently two floors that are being proposed. The first floor is all the treatment facility that's going to be utilized to produce the purified recycled water. So, as we work up the staircase here, you'll get a glimpse of the treatment system that's going to produce the purified recycled water. But the second floor to us is key. It's going to be an education center or a learning center where we want to invite the public to come learn about all aspects about the city's water supply, the history, what we're doing today, namely at Tillman, and then the future of our water supply, where we can talk about all the investments we're making into the future to develop local water supplies. You'll see it looks very eerily similar to other facilities or education centers throughout Southern California. So, Long Beach Aquarium, the Water Replenishment District has an award-winning education center. So, we took inspiration from those facilities to build what you see there. And of course, there's going to be a balcony that's going to look over top the treatment. Again, we're trying to encourage the public to come to understand the high-quality water and the technology that's going to be utilized to produce the safe water that we're going to be pumping into the ground. As we make our way down to the ground level, everything you see to the left is all the advanced technology. It's being used in Singapore, Israel, South America, of course, in Orange County. They have the largest potable reuse facility in the world, so it's the same treatment technology. But again, tongue-in-cheek, but wait, there's more. So, this is, again, tongue-in-cheek, there's not going to be this fictitious elevator there. But we wanted to get...
That's something that connects to the time machine, right?
Yeah, exactly. Go back in time to see the start of the project.
Go back in time, but now we're forward-thinking. This is based on an actual design. So, this is going to be underneath the megastructure. This is all the same type of treatment, allowing us to produce forty-five MGD of purified recycled water. Again, in simple terms, what that means is enough water for half a million people. And the last point here, of course, is we've worked intentionally with the contractor to make sure that all the work can be completed before the Olympics, so by the end of 2027. I'll go through this slide very quickly, but I think it's important for us to showcase the strategy that DWP has implemented to make sure that we maximize our investment. So, this is a schematic of the project that we all know and love, GWR. The idea would be to produce purified recycled water from Tillman, convey it ten miles northeast to an existing fifty-four-inch purple pipe, and that water will go into the ground from our Hansen Spreading Grounds. That's a joint partnership from the L.A. County Flood Control District, so they're an important key partner. What I'm showing here are two questions that we often get is, how are we going to receive all the wastewater necessary to produce the forty-five MGD? And two, where is the water going to go? So, to answer the first question, there's several ways in which DWP can treat forty-five MGD. One is shown there in blue, and that would be the construction of a new sewer trunk line, which essentially would be taking water from, call it, Universal Studios, and sending that back to Tillman to allow us to make use of the treatment that we would be building within the AWPF at Tillman. That's one option, but there are several options that we are evaluating now to make sure that we can treat the forty-five MGD. Now, the second part of the question is also very important, which I'll just briefly cover, is the department owns and operates several groundwater basins in the San Fernando Valley. Those are shown in the light blue. So, Tahanga and Pacoima are existing spreading grounds that DWP can also utilize in addition to Hansen to make sure that all the water that we produce is able to go into the ground. So, there's many options for us. What it means for us is all the water that we produce from Tillman, a hundred percent of that new supply can be utilized and go into our groundwater basins to deal with the inevitable future drought.
You know, one of the most important words in the explanation that you've been making is the word "new" because there is no such thing as new water, other than what we're doing here. You know, there's that old line about we're all really recycle, we're drinking recycled dinosaur pee still, you know, and there's some truth to that. But this is actually, this would be categorized as new water.
Correct.
And that's part of what makes this so fantastic.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that it's new and it's drought resilient.
Yep.
So, I'll close with just a few key points. Again, the collaboration is key, not just with L.A. San, but again, a whole host of community and NGO partners that we're working collaboratively with. So, part of what we're trying to do, as was mentioned by the speakers, is not just think about new water supply, but think more broadly as far as the impact that this project has on the environment, on the recreation, on biodiversity. Those are all key tenants of what this team is trying to address. And lastly, the point about demonstrating the spreading grounds is to highlight that DWP is making prudent investments. So, there's assets that we have available to us we intend to utilize, coupled with the work that we're doing at Tillman. So, last slide here is, again, this is a huge, huge milestone achievement for the city of L.A. and its ability to produce a new climate-resilient water supply. As those of us know, this project has a long history. President Katz, you know that very well. But it's, to us, it's a story about ingenuity, about leadership, about a commitment to doing the right thing. So, again, I want to thank this board for all the things that you've done to support us for a very long time.
And overcoming, you know, overcoming politics at one point, and actually, for a long period, but a testimony to the NGOs, the community-based organizations, the professionals, DWP, and sanitation, a tribute to Barbara and her crew, and, you know, the ability to get these two agencies, which for years didn't have the warmest of relationships, shall we say, but have proven that you can get past things like that for the common good. And that's what we're saying here today. And I really want to congratulate both organizations, the staff, and the executive leadership for doing what had to be done, and also the NGOs for making sure we never forgot what had to be done.
May I comment? Yeah, please.
Thank you. So, as Andrea, Connor, Bruce, Leah, and others shared, I wanted to start my remarks by acknowledging the passing this past week of a dedicated water advocate in our community, Melanie Winter. Melanie was deeply dedicated to the L.A. River and developing local water sources, especially through stormwater capture and nature-based solutions for flood management. Despite being in treatment for terminal cancer, she still made it to our recent event at Tillman and the Waterkeeper event that was mentioned. But I wanted to share that in her last week, while she was in the emergency room, she reached out to me about a Sepulveda Basin Vision Plan Update Meeting, worried about missing it and wanting to make sure that there were notes and/or a recording. She was absolutely unwavering in her commitment to L.A. watersheds, to the basin, and to nature. Over the decades, Melanie worked with many in the department, and she really pushed us all hard to expand our perspectives of what the river and the watershed could be, ensuring that healthy ecosystems and communities be considered together. We're committed to carry that legacy forward, especially in our stormwater projects, and ensure that the department enacts the commitment of our board motion on biodiversity and nature-based solutions through multi-benefit projects. I want to thank all of our public commenters today, nonprofit leaders and community leaders like Waterkeeper, Communities for a Better Environment, Friends of the Inyo, Mono Lake Committee, Friends of the L.A. River, East Yard Communities for Environmental Justice, Sierra Club, and others, for speaking so eloquently on the need for a new sustainable local water supply in Los Angeles, and the community's commitment to continued water conservation, which is an important piece of the puzzle. We wouldn't be here today without your partnership, as President Katz already indicated. We might be here on the dais for the finish line, but many of you, like Martha, have been working on and advocating for local water supply in L.A. for decades and were involved at the very start of this project decades ago. I want to echo the thanks to Mary Nichols. As President Katz noted, we owe so much to your leadership and will carry forward the work that you've led for decades. And I want to thank you for speaking so eloquently on the way that, especially in the long term, our ecology and economy are inextricably linked and have to be addressed together. Some of you, like Santina, traveled all the way from Pae Hoonado to be here with us and speak to the responsibility we have, which we take very deeply to heart. This landmark groundwater replenishment project, in addition to all the benefits you heard about this morning, will also include an updated educational facility to educate Angelenos about our water systems and native plant demonstration gardens. It will be a location for schoolchildren and adults from all over L.A. to learn how these watersheds are connected and to envision a more resilient water future for us all. The water from Tillman already supports wildlife areas and parks throughout the basin, a key biodiversity area for the city of L.A. I'm so proud of this project as a commissioner, of course, but also as someone who grew up in Van Nuys and as a resident of the neighborhoods surrounding Tillman. This is such an amazing and important project. And as I've shared in prior board meetings with this joint leadership from DWP and L.A. San in partnership with the Public Works Board, thank you Commissioner Mitchell for being here, and Barbara, and Salmo, Evelyn, Hugh, and of course, the example set by Jesus and Ryan. Thank you so much for your presentation this morning and to the whole team. To me, this project exemplifies the best of what L.A. City can do, when we bridge silos across departments and truly work as a team and take an integrated and systems approach to solving the challenges before us. So, thank you again for the presentation and for your leadership, and I'm really excited to get this approved today. Thank you.
George?
I joked earlier about being here for Scattergood, but I was tickled to be asked to be here today to see this across the finish line. Barbara, thank you for being here. I really appreciated the partnership that we've had over the last few years of my tenure here, and the way we've really hit reset on this relationship, on this project, and on Pure Water L.A. There are so many more great things to come. I don't have any sort of comment that could possibly compare to what Nareet just did. So, I will just say that it is probably, you know, one of the greatest honors of my career to have been a very small part of this project. And I owe so much of what I know about this project and about sort of our relationship with tribes in the north from the Mono Basin down to Pae Hoonado and, you know, throughout the neighborhoods of Los Angeles, to our community partners, people like Bruce Resnick and others who are here, who came to me, I think, in my very first week on the board and said, you know, the city has committed to seventy percent local water through the L.A. Green New Deal, and we want to understand really what that number means and how it's being calculated, and what projects that we're really putting behind that number with what timeline to get there. And so, I'm really grateful to them and to the department for hammering that out and just staying so focused on these projects that really create resiliency for the city. I am deeply aligned with our, you know, my two fellow commissioners here, that we really urgently need to reduce our dependence on water from the eastern Sierra. We need to do it for our own security and for mitigating climate risk. We need to do it to heal our relationships with the folks in the eastern Sierra who have, you know, been a victim of the city's need for many generations now. I'm really good friends, I have become really good friends, with Charlotte Lang, the chairwoman at the Cacitica, whose, you know, native homeland, tribal homeland surrounds the Mono Basin, and with whom we've really been actively collaborating through the work of Adam and others up on the aqueduct on everything... others up on the aqueduct, on everything from controlled burns to truly harvesting to working on the health of the toufa and the alkali flies, you know, spending time up there with Charlotte and her people, seeing the effort that those tribes are making to get land back, get water back, build the infrastructure they need to welcome their elders back to their community so that they can do things like successfully apply for federal recognition of their tribal rights, is so important, and L.A. has a really vital role to play in that. But it really, it isn't just for them. It is also for us. Our survival, our resilience is dependent on our ability to solve this equation. It's something that is a win across the board. It's a win for us, it's a win for them, it's a win for water justice, it's a win for the environment, it's a win for the natural systems that depend, natural and animal systems that depend on this, it's a win for biodiversity. I very much hope that this project is the first in a long line of those that make L.A. completely water secure and independent over the next several generations. And I am really excited to have been a part of this and really grateful to those who have sort of carried me along on their backs. You know, we are the leaders up here on the dais, but so often we're also the students of these projects that, you know, as many have commented before, long precede us, in this case, for more than 20 years. I was 18 when we started working on this. So I really appreciate being here. I appreciate all your advocacy. I appreciate your patience with the department and with the city as we figure out some of these thorny problems for which, you know, several decades ago, there weren't good technological solutions. And so I think, you know, with the rate of acceleration and some of those advancements, we'll see more and more opportunities to create that resiliency in basin. And I know that Mayor Bass, the Governor Newsom, and that their successors will remain committed to doing that and will be supporting us in those efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate the comments. All right, we have...
Oh, no, I was, nothing. Go ahead.
We have a motion.
That's all I was saying, yeah. Motion to approve item N1.
I guess I'll second.
Motion to second. Before we go, go on it. Tim? Ratepayer advocate, comment, please.
Yes, thank you, President Katz. In preparation for today's meeting and consideration of this expansion, the Office of Public Accountability and our staff visited the project on at least two occasions between July 1st and October 1st and several times previous to that, and we reviewed project documentation. We're talking about a significant expenditure of dollars, and we performed independent analysis on that expenditure in this expansion. So based on the proposed amendment of the contract, we think that this represents certainly a forward-thinking initiative that adds ratepayer value to the original project design at a small incremental cost compared to other options. When you look at the facility development cost details, approving this expansion would enable the department to produce water locally at a cost that would be lower than other options, such as procuring it through the Metropolitan Water District. Further, we find that this project provides a leap forward in the ability for the department to source water locally, to diversify its supply sources, which then helps to provide an improvement in the resiliency of the Los Angeles' water future, which diversifies the, and strengthens, the water system against drought and other climate stressors, which in and of themselves entails risks that ratepayers would have to confront going forward. As a result of that analysis, we support the approval of this, and we find that it provides ample benefits for ratepayers at a cost-effective project design. Thank you.
Tim, thank you. Appreciate that. One of the most important parts of what you said, because it's one of the myths that floats around this, is how it favorably compares to MWD water and the cost to, the cost of the ratepayer from this project versus having to import water from other sources. So that's an important data point that we now have on the record. Other comments? Let me just say, you know, I really appreciate hearing that you started this and involved us when you were 18, because I think I was 40 something when I, about the same time. So...
Hit your shots, if you can.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you. But you can't, you know, you're moving quickly, which we appreciate, George. But I wrote a law in '94 that paid for that pipe we were talking about that goes from Tillman to Sepulveda Basin. I've been hoping it would get used before now, but, you know, we're saving it for the really great project, I think. You know, in '94, the idea of conservation and conserving water was, it was very tech. It was very state-of-the-art. You put a brick in a toilet, and it took up space, which meant you used less water. I mean, that's what conservation was at that point. It was low-tech and everybody could do it. But, and it was part of the original idea of how do we offset what L.A. wouldn't be taking out of Mono Lake anymore. And I think that, you know, we still need to close that loop on that. I would really encourage both the department as well, our department as well as, along with sanitation, but others, to work with the community-based organizations. I'd love to see a joint letter, for instance, from the Mono Lake Committee and from Department of DWP, from our water, from our water side, going back and asking the State Board to modify the '94 decision and say, you know, L.A., by the way, and just so I'm clear, I'm not an advocate of L.A. giving up our water rights and acknowledging that cuban emergency, all things are on the table, but I am very strongly an advocate of having criteria about what it takes to get to that point. And I want to see us, I'd like to see us have an agreement that we can take to the State Water Board and say, you know, we're going to work to keep, to get the lake back to 6392. You know, as a number of people have said, L.A. gets, I think it's 2% of our water from Mono Lake. And 40,000 acre feet coming out of this project is a boatload of water. And so we ought to be able to figure out how to offset that so that, particularly with this, points that Tim made about cost and MWD water, there's a way to make it happen. And I know there are true believers on all sides and good people on all sides, but I think we have to acknowledge, we've been pissing on each other long enough over this, over this issue, and there's so many other things we need to fix in this world. We ought to be able to agree on this and move forward. Mono Lake needs to be, you know, needs to be vibrant. It needs to, it plays a key role in our ecosystem, and we have an obligation to help undo some of the damage we did up there. And I know George has been working on it, Narit's working on it, other people in this commission and in people in Department of Water Resources, I'm, Department, in DWP as well as the council have been working on doing that. But I would really like to see that get done. And, you know, and I think no one would be happier to get that done probably than the State Water Resources Control Board that doesn't want to have another hearing on this, as we all know. They've been there, we've all been there. But there's a better way to go forward, and so many more, so many other things equally important but critical that we need to act on. So that would be my hope to come out of this. Any other comments before we vote on this, or?
No, well said, President Katz. Thank you.
Thank you. On a motion by Katz and a second by George, all members present being recorded as aye votes?
Aye.
Yeah, call the roll, please.
All right, call the roll.
Commissioner Narit Katz?
Aye.
President Richard Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice President McGraw?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted. Thank you.
It is done. Congratulations. We're going to take a five-minute break because that's, anytime one of us gets up, it ends, it stops the quorum. So we're going to take a five-minute break so people can do what they got to do and then pick up on that other little project we have to take up today.
Right, thanks.
Thank you very much.[1165.83]
They're ready?
Hello? We will begin momentarily, please take your seats. Hello, we will begin momentarily, please take your seats. Security, would you please close the two back doors?
Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say present. Commissioner Narik Katz?
Present.
President Richard Katz?
Present.
Vice President McGraw?
Present.
Three board members of Quorum is present, Mr. President.
We're going to go to item five. And I'd like to start with, we have one comment card, I understand, on,
Yes.
Let's call that public comment on item five. And then, then Mr. Chaco will be up for a brief presentation on item five. And after we wrap that up quickly, that will, it will go into scatter good.
We have ratepayer advocate on number five, too.
Yes, we do. We never leave home without them.
No. It's everywhere you want to be.
Speaker Julie Castro, please be mindful you have two minutes for the subject matter for item number five.
Thank you for giving, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to join the board meeting today. My name is Julie Castro, and I work on the team responsible for collaborating with utilities to create value and a positive customer experience for GM's customers. GM appreciates LEDWP's leadership in demand management and innovative programs. GM continues to make investments in electric vehicles. Our collaborations with utilities and energy market companies like aggregators are top priorities as they provide valuable offers for our joint customers and learnings on how we can scale together. EV managed charging is an important opportunity for our customers in LEDWP's territory and sets the stage for future opportunities. We would like to request the continuation of the residential managed charging component of item number five so staff can consider a key material issue. Which proposed OEM integrations are direct authorized API connections backed by executed commercial contracts with automakers? The presence of a direct OEM integration positively impacts customer engagement, data quality, control reliability, the ability to scale telematics-based programs, and most importantly, cybersecurity. As the Alliance for Automotive Innovation has advised, utilities should inquire with vendors about the availability of official OEM integrations backed by commercial contracts. GM's strategy is to work with aggregator vendors who we have, who we have direct technical integrations and commercial agreements with to protect the things I just listed above for best customer experience and for reliable utility program. It would be great to connect with LEDWP to understand your priorities and find a path forward for our shared customers. Thank you.
Thank you. On item five, Mr. Chaco. David, thank you. I think we've all seen pieces of this, so a good succinct, brief, high-level briefing would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Allow us to go forward, because this is, this is a critical piece of what we're also doing after this as well. So, thank you for being here to present.
Sure, good morning. Thank you, Board President, Vice President, Commissioner, everyone. Yes, I'm going to skip ahead to one slide in particular, which will discuss here for this item. Okay, so what you have before you today is an item that consists of four contracts that spans six program components. And this will give a quick rundown. These are, this is the department's coordinated effort to develop a large and comprehensive load flexibility, demand response, and automatic load management portfolio programs. We have historically not had a whole lot in this space, up until a couple of years ago, when we developed two of the programs that we're seeking to continue and then add four more. So, we've, we've, we've had a commercial and institutional demand response program, which is a call-ahead program where when we know we need to see some load drop the next day, we contact the customers that are already enrolled. And we've had a smart thermostat program called Power Savers. And that's been, those have both been great programs, combined about 80 megawatts of dispatchable capacity. This, this expansion that's before you today, this, this expansion that's before you today seeks to increase that by over four, over four times by 2030. So, from 80 megawatts average dispatchable capacity to at least 340. We figure that's, that's probably conservative, but that's, that's where we have it set today. That can, that can grow over, over time. So, there's, so in addition to maintaining and expanding the commercial and institutional program and the smart thermostat Power Savers program, the four additional components, the first one is actually not a customer program. The first one is a derms solution platform, a man response management system. It's an integration platform for all the other programs that the, the resources that are being presented to our energy control center can be presented in a coordinated and a uniform manner. So, it makes it easier for, for, for the load dispatchers to take advantage of these resources. So, that's kind of a fundamental thing, you know? When you have one or two programs, you can, you know, you don't necessarily need that, but once you're getting to five as we have here and potentially more in the future, you absolutely have to have an integrated platform for how those, those resources are managed and presented to your control center so that it's, it's, can be much more strategic in the deployment, much more reliable in the deployment of those resources. So, so there's that. The, the whole, the whole idea here and the timing of this, we're being, this is complementary to another item you'll be hearing today, that I think a lot of folks are here for, which is related to our scatter good hydrogen repowering. Now, I'm not here to talk about that, but this is a key support for our efforts to green and decarbonize our grit through these, these resources that help us balance generating assets, scattered good one, but also renewable assets such as solar battery plants in basin, out of basin, our other, our other investments, hydro, geothermal, et cetera. So, that's, that's kind of the context there. The, the other programs we're adding are managed charging for commercial EVs and managed charging for residential EVs. And then, the final component is for Internet of Things, smart devices. These are things other than thermostats, so smart refrigerators, dryers, washing machines, smart window units. We're getting to where we're getting heat pump window units that are highly efficient and also Internet-connected, that don't necessarily fit into how the thermostat program itself has worked, and we can capture those through this program as well. So, that's, that's the rundown of the, of the six components. I did want to give a little scale here as well. The, the, the two continuing components remain the two biggest components by far. The Power Savers program, which has 42 megawatts of firm capacity today, it, it has an intermediate, instantaneous capacity, it's higher, but in terms of what we, what we see over the average four-hour, two-hour event is, is considered to be 42 megawatts today. We plan to grow that up to at least 100 megawatts, so two and a half times bigger than it is now. The commercial institutional demand response program currently is 38 megawatts capacity, so the two together is the 80 I mentioned earlier. That one, we're, we're planning to grow up to 220 megawatts. So, that's huge. That's almost eight, six and a half, seven times. That's, that's a big growth for that, for that program. And that's because there's a lot of untapped potential in that, in that customer segment. Building energy management systems that we've, we've promoted to customers through our energy efficiency programs over the last 10 to 12 years are ripe for aggregation now, as well as industrial processes in, in some of our manufacturing facilities throughout the city. That can be custom, that can be custom designed for load shift strategies and, and managed through that. The rest of the programs I mentioned are relatively small. The, the commercial EV managed charging program, we're looking at about five megawatts of capacity on that. The residential managed charging program, 10 megawatts. And the IoT smart devices, five megawatts. So, the bulk of the 340 megawatts at the end of this program cycle that we'll have on tap is from the two main legacy programs, commercial industrial demand response and, and the smart thermostat Power Savers program. The reason for that is because these other areas are pretty new. Managed charging of EVs, whether it's commercial or residential, has, has several touchpoints at which you can, you can manage the charging on the car and, the charging of the vehicle, I should say. And we want to have the flexibility to, to start a little small on that and explore those various touchpoints. I want to give a little, you know, example of that. One place you can manage the charging is through interacting with, with the manufacturers, their own, their own platform inside the vehicle. The controls inside the vehicle is what we call the OEM API. And that's the original equipment manufacturer's application programming interface, I believe is what that is. And so, that's really getting into telematics that, that control the, that read, control, get data from the vehicle itself, its own computers inside the vehicle. That's one. Another touchpoint is the charger, the chargers themselves. In terms of managing the, the tier-two chargers, that's mainly what we're looking at through this. The commercial program, we'll look at tier-three DC fast chargers also. But the residential side is all tier-two, two 40-volt chargers. And so, that's another touchpoint in terms of, of being able to manage the charging, turn it off, turn it on, throttle it back, et cetera. And the third component, the third way to manage EV charging is back at the breaker panel, the, the panel on, on the home. And, and there's smart breakers that, that can be installed and can do the charging there as well. So, I say all that to say that, you know, we're starting small in that space on both the residential and the commercial side, because we're looking at all three of those. And we don't have, necessarily have those in place in this contract yet at this point, other than what we've, what I think we heard a public comment about, about managing with the, with the OEMs onboard telematics with their, with the cars. But we're looking beyond that, and we're looking at, at, at exploring, you know, which is the best? Do we do them side by side? So, that, that is not answered today. But I give you that context so you can kind of see why 340 megawatts is comprised of 320 of it being the two legacy programs that we're continuing expanding, and then the three more programs that are more forays into these new areas. One other point I'd like to make on this is that we're allocating, asking the board to allocate $195 million to this effort over the next five years. That's average 40 million a year. It'll, it'll ramp, so it'll be backloaded a little bit as we build the programs. But 139 million of that is for direct customer incentives. So, the professional services portion of this contract is 56 million. So, roughly one-third of it, a little bit less than one-third, roughly one-third is for the professional services across the, the four contracts, the six components. And two-thirds of it is for customer incentives that will be passed through to the customers for their participation and encouraged. their participation and encouraged ongoing participation in, in the various programs.
Great. Thank you, David. I appreciate that. Tim, you want to weigh in here?
Yes, thank you, President Katz. And OPA had the opportunity to meet with the teams at the department and review the documentation in advance of, of this. Our analysis, of course, is, you know, first and foremost, that the department, the region needs more demand response programs, more energy efficiency programs, more ways to manage load, and this is an important and vital step in that process. We support the department moving forward, you know, with this expenditure, which is significant when you combine the professional services plus the incentives associated with these. And if you were to look at 195 million against 340 megawatts of demand response, that could be seen as a pretty expensive value proposition if there was not strong opportunities to ensure dispatch reliability, to make sure that the power actually showed up, that there might be multiple deployments over the course of a year, to be able to isolate and target those when it's needed the most. So the department is really taking full advantage of what this type of effort enables. That being said, we have comments that we've provided to the board that would recommend that it, that the DWP maintained continuous and transparent tracking of the progress towards achieving the 340 megawatt goal and that there be thorough documentation of program implementation and the learnings to ensure that those dollars are actually being maximized for the value of ratepayers and for achieving the benefits that DWP espouses in the, in the project documents. Thank you.
Right. And that all makes sense. Pretty, as, as a new program, we want to track it carefully and make sure that it's doing what, you know, what we all want it to and what David's trying to get it to do. So.
Yeah, and I would add on that, that we do have a good base of history on the two existing programs. And we've worked very closely with the Energy Control Center and, and the senior load dispatchers over there to make sure that, that we're getting it right and that they're confident in, in, in the reliability of the dispatchability of these assets when, when they need them, or else they won't use them. And that's the worst situation we would get into is where we do make this investment, sign up a bunch of customers, call an event, it doesn't, you know, the load doesn't drop, and then, then the ECC doesn't want to use the resource. And we've got several years working with them already on the Power Savers thermostat program and the CII program. And we've already built a basis of, you know, not just trust, but obviously processes to ensure the reliability of these assets. And that's why we're taking it slow with the other ones, you know, to, to, to build those up over time to get to that similar level of confidence.
Makes sense. Makes sense. What's the will of the board?
Well, I just wanted to comment that I think, you know, as we are working on this transition to clean energy, you know, it's often renewable energy projects and new things that we're building that are sort of flashier and get a lot of attention, but efficiency, conservation programs, programs like demand management are absolutely the backbone of any sort of decarbonization and transition from fossil fuels. So I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership in these areas and thank you, Tim, our ratepayer advocate, for, for the comments. And I don't have any further questions at this time, but just wanted to really acknowledge the importance of these programs and all of our customer programs.
I'm guessing you were going to move this.
I can make a motion if you're ready. Yeah.
You were going in that direction.
I wasn't sure if you were at that point yet. Did anyone else have comments? Okay. Motion to approve then. What is our number one?
And five.
And five.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion second on five. Any objection to all three of us being recorded as I votes?
No, sir.
Seeing none. As such shall be the order. That is passed. And we're done for the day now, right? If only. So, thank you, David. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Okay. Who's doing item six for us?
Would you like to open public comment for item?
No, I really wouldn't, but, but I think I have to. So, public comment on item six. Get comfortable, folks.
Public comment for item six is open at this time. There are approximately 45 speakers. The maximum time for speaking is two minutes to help us conclude business as expeditiously as possible. The first speaker will be Ernesto Madrano and Lorraine Paskett, and Paskett together.
Good afternoon. I almost said good morning. Good afternoon, President Katz and Commissioner. My name is Lorraine Paskett and I serve as the Chief Operating Officer of First Public Hydrogen Authority. We were created earlier this year by cities to accelerate the transition to clean hydrogen in a way that serves a public good. Our mission is simple but powerful to help cities, utilities, and the public agencies like DWP build the partnerships, infrastructure, and workforce needed to make the transition real and equitable. We are proud to stand in strong support of the Scattergood Modernization Project because it represents the kind of bold, forward-thinking leadership that defines Los Angeles. DWP has long been a trailblazer, showing what's possible when public agencies take decisive steps towards cleaner, more sustainable energy. This project is more than an upgrade. It's a blueprint for moving from fossil fuels to clean, flexible, hydrogen-ready generation while keeping the lights on for millions of Angelinos. It's the kind of work that shows who we are as a region, creative, determined, and unwilling to wait for someone else to build the future for us. At First Public Hydrogen Authority, we see firsthand the momentum building across LA County from new electrolysis facilities to hydrogen refueling infrastructure. The region is quickly becoming a hub for innovation, but for that momentum to turn into lasting change, we need public agencies like DWP to step up and anchor demand. Scattergood does exactly this. It gives developers, investors, and communities confidence that Los Angeles is ready to lead on clean hydrogen at scale. DWP has the chance to position the city and the region at the forefront of the global clean energy transition to create an energy system that's cleaner, more reliable, and more equitable, built by skilled local workers and driven by a public purpose. I'm here today with my board member, Ernesto Madrano, who's the Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange County Building Trades and who's also a board member of First Public Authority.
Good afternoon. I want to begin by recognizing LAWP's leadership and the courage it takes to make decisions like this. What's before you today isn't just another energy project. It is a transformational point. It's a chance for Los Angeles to lead once again by building the clean energy infrastructure that will define the next century. This decision sends a powerful message to the world. Los Angeles isn't waiting for the future. We're building it. What you decide today will settle to developers, investors, and innovators across the country that LA County means business and when it comes to clean energy. What LA, that LA is serious about sustaining a real green economy, one that sparks innovation, draws investment, and creates opportunity for every corner of the region. But this isn't just about technology. It's about the people who build this future with their hands. It's about creating good careers that lift families, sustain communities, and keep opportunities right here at home. The building trades have the skilled workforce, the training, and the readiness to get to work today and to make this transition real, just, and lasting for generations to come. The impact of our decision will stretch far beyond this room. Green hydrogen can help us clean up goods, clean up goods movement, reduce diesel emissions, and bring cleaner operations to our ports, directly improving air quality and public health, especially in neighborhoods that have borne the brunt of pollution for decades. And for too long, those communities have paid the price for energy choices. Today, we have a chance to make it right. Now, I've heard some question whether green hydrogen even exists, and let me be clear, that's just not wrong. It's outdated. As a member of, as a board member of the First Public Hydrogen Authority and as Executive Secretary of the LAOC Building Trades Council, I've seen it firsthand. Green hydrogen is here, it's real, and it's growing. LAWP has helped lead that progress. They say Los Angeles is where the world comes to dream. Well, this is right here. There is that dream in action, a city proving that we can build, innovate, and clean, lead in clean energy the same way we led on entertainment, aerospace, and culture. If we stay the course, if we keep attracting investment, scaling the production, and driving down costs, everyone wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Next up?
The next speaker is Paul Browning, who will be followed by Angelina Gutiera and then Martin Marufo.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Paul Browning. I'm the chairman at Generative Reason LLC, and I'm a former CEO in the gas turbine industry. I was a CEO at GE Vernova Gas Power, the world's largest gas turbine company, and I was also the CEO at Mitsubishi Power Americas. I was, I was at Mitsubishi when our team developed the Advanced Clean Energy Storage Project and the, supplied the gas turbines to the Intermountain Power Renewed Project, two projects I'm sure the commission is very well aware of that have completed construction and are currently in the commissioning phase and should enter commercial operation very soon. So for people who wonder if green hydrogen is real, nobody knows better than the commission that you built it with LEDWP as the largest off taker of the IPP Renewed Project and IPP Renewed, the 100% off taker of the Advanced Clean Energy Storage Project. I, I come here, I'm somebody who's really sort of thought deeply about how do we transition away from natural gas as a fuel source? And I can tell you that wind and solar, hydropower, which are important parts of LEDWP's current generation profile, are absolutely essential to do that. Lithium-ion battery storage is absolutely essential to move away from natural gas and as a matter of fact is already having that impact and causing California's utilities to, to use less natural gas. But you can't finish the job without green hydrogen or some other long-duration energy storage technology. And so, so some people who are a little bit worried that green, that Scattergood and green hydrogen is a way to sort of perpetuate the use of natural gas, I would just advise you it's exactly the opposite. This is the final nail in the coffin of natural gas power generation, and this comes from a guy who's been selling natural gas power generation for 40 years. So, so anyway, I think that's my strongest message to you. Green hydrogen is real. We built it. LEDWP built it. And, and also, it's essential if you really are committed to the transition away from fossil fuel power generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Good afternoon. Wonderful to be here. My name is Angelina Galitova. I'm with the Alliance for Renewable Clean Hydrogen Energy Systems, Arches. And we are the hydrogen hub for the state of California, and we are very happy to be here to support one of the projects that we helped enable. We believe that Scattergood is one of the critical projects to make sure that we have a reliable, resilient system that allows the basin that is insulated to a certain extent for transmission development and gives us that reliability and security with homegrown, inflation-proof energy to provide electricity if there was a, a natural disaster or if for some reason there was a fire that took transmissions lines out of operation. So we do need in basin power plants in a constrained area to make sure that we have enough power and reliability. I'm also the founder of Renewables 100 Policy Institute, which is one of the members of the Arches LLC, and have been working on renewable energy and making sure that we can transition to 100% renewable carbon-free energy. We can do this, and DWP has been a leader. I had the privilege of working at DWP. I know what it takes to create a project like this. So thank you so much for your leadership, President Katz, my friend, Nourid Katz, Commissioner Maguire. Thank you for taking another day and being here with us today to vote on two very important items. Staff that has worked so hard to make this happen, Marty Adams, Paul Hibib, Normina, Jason Rondo, Catherine, everybody that has pulled and worked endless hours to make sure that this project can be a showcase for how we lead the nation and we lead the world. As Los Angeles has always been a shining beacon of hope, and we want to make sure that this is a very successful project because as others have pointed out, this sets the bar, and this creates the flexible demand that will drive production and that will ensure we have the kilowatt hours and the electrons working together to make sure we have a reliable and resilient energy system. So if you build it, there will come, there will be production. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Martin Marufo, who will be followed by William Funderburke Jr. and Martin Adams.
Welcome, Martin.
Thank you. Started out as a morning, good afternoon. Deja vu all over again. Glad to see you still here. Thank you. Thank you for doing the work that you do during hard times. It's always hard. My name is Martin Marufo. I'm the business manager for, manager for IBW Local 18. I represent the workers at LEDWP, also at Burbank, Pasadena, Glendale, and Azusa. We, I myself am a citizen of, of Los Angeles. I've been here my whole life. This has been my life. I live in Wilmington. I've worked the refineries. I've worked on the docks for a minute. I, you know, worked in chemical plants. I've done a lot of industrial work. I've worked in the generating stations. I worked at Southern California Edison for five years just prior to deregulation and saw, saw what, you know, what the, with the importance of generation and how important it is to have reliable and inexpensive energy in times of crisis. What we have right now is we're, we're at a, we're at a crossing point. We need to get this done quickly. I, I, I wholeheartedly support green energy. My kids live in Wilmington. My grandkids live in Wilmington. My sisters are teachers in the Wilmington School District. My wife was, is a retired teacher. My daughter's a teacher in Wilmington. So this is of particular importance to me, not just as a, as a representative of labor. We, we have labor issues, of course, but reliability in Los Angeles is of the utmost importance, and we need to realize the consequence of not going forward with this project right now. We are, we are, we have a microcosm of what we have in, in the city of Glendale, where they did not build the capacity that they needed there. They wanted to go with green hydrogen, and they did, but they reduced the amount of, of energy they could produce because they wanted to limit the gas-fired production. So now they're begging LA for, for power. They're coming to us for, for their normal, everyday power. We need to understand that the consequences of saying no to this right now are long-term and lasting. I believe in green energy. I believe in clean air, but I also know we, we have to support the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Ed.
The next speaker is William Funderburke Jr., who will be followed by Marty Adams.
Good morning, President Katz. I've returned.
I noticed.
From Washington, DC.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, too. Let me see. Be a little less emotional than I was last time. Here, here to talk about three things. One, equity metrics. Two, our collective institutional memory. And three, the Scattergood transition. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Billy. Yeah, people call me Billy back east, so I'm going to call myself Billy. But y'all out here call me Bill Funderburke. I speak today not in opposition or support of the Scattergood hydrogen transition, but to underscore a deeper concern, LEDWP has not conducted the comprehensive equity analysis required by its own board resolutions, specifically Resolution Number 017036, August 2016, and Resolution Number 018076, 2018. These resolutions establish the Equity Metrics Data Initiative, a white paper that I have copyrighted, actually, so feel free to use it at liberty, all right? You have my permission. A framework to track how LEDWP's investments impact communities across Los Angeles. That framework was meant to be applied to all major capital decisions, including generation transitions like Scatter, Scattergood. It hasn't been. I want to be clear. I hold General Manager Marty Adams, Commissioner, or I don't think it's Commissioner anymore, but Angelina Galitova, and the Queen of Green, Mary Nichols, in the highest regard. Their technical fluency and climate vision are unmatched, but even the most forward-looking transitions must be grounded in equity metrics, not as an afterthought, but as a foundation. President, President Richard Katz, 30 more seconds, please. President Richard Katz recently said, "I will work to ensure that LEDWP programs and policies benefit everyone equitably in Los Angeles." That promise must be honored not just in words, but in metrics, in procurement, in pension oversight, in SCAPA governance, in Scattergood, in Tillman, in every infrastructure investment going forward. And as Mayor Tom Bradley once said, "People cut themselves off from their ties of the old life when they come in Los Angeles." They're looking for- investment going forward. And as Mayor Tom Bradley once said, "People cut themselves off from their ties of the old life when they come in Los Angeles. They're looking for a place where they can be free, where they can do things they couldn't do anywhere else." That freedom must include representation. Los Angeles is over 40% Chicano, Chicana, Mexicana, Mexicano. Yet, in the past 13 years, not a single Mexican-American has served on this board. That's not the board's job. That's the mayor's job. But I want to make sure that's out there because even though the city is greater than 50% Latino, it is 40% Chicano. And that's not acceptable. In fact, Edith, I can't remember her last name, from Latham and Watkins, she didn't hold an officer position on the board. So I don't even know when the last vice president or president was who was Chicano. That's a problem. Yet, I urge the board to apply all 50 equity metrics, not just the 15 that are easy to check off, because equity isn't a checkbox. It's a commitment, and it's time we honored that commitment with rigor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Katz and commissioners. And it is nice to be back amongst friends. Been a long time, probably too long. I just wanted to take just a moment and provide some context where this stands in time for the decision in front of you from where we started a while ago. I remember the day that we had Vice President Al Gore on the outside by the moat. And I don't know, Joe, how many hundreds or thousand people out there, when the city made a commitment to get off of coal. And that was big news at the time. The city was going to get out of the coal at IPP and go a different direction. It was not too long after that that we were dealing with once-through cooling, which affected our three coastal power plants. And we were in this boardroom, I think I was either head of the water system or a brand-new CLO, when there was then a push to get off of gas. And we had done a lot of planning to do the scatter good project, to renew scatter good as a gas plant. And the decision was made at that time with the city leadership and the board to go carbon-free. And that was the beginning of a new journey for this department and for the city as a whole. Following that, there were extensive studies, the LA 100 study, the work with N-Rail, all of which culminated in the conclusion that we cannot get by as a city and be reliable without invasion generation. Every credible study, and there's been a lot of looks at this, has shown that you have to have significant invasion generation to keep the lights on and meet the federal standards. And so the scatter good project had to proceed in some direction. The decision to embrace green hydrogen as a fuel of the future to make that work, and I realize that on the EIR today, you're approving a hydrogen-ready plant. DWP is not responsible for bringing hydrogen to the plant, making that fuel available or how, you know, it becomes available to want to be a user. You have folks here speaking today about green hydrogen, and it is a reality. It is becoming a reality even more and more so every day, and so that fuel will take place. But as much as that fuel is important for scatter good to meet the city's clean energy goals, scatter good is important to the hydrogen economy of Southern California and to play a critical role as that moves forward. So again, I want to really encourage you to understand just the history of how we got to this place. This is very intentional to be here today, to get to where we have a clean burning fuel plant, the potential, and right here in Los Angeles, that'll keep the lights on, that'll provide the reliability that the city needs. It's not by accident. It's by a long, thought-out plan. And now this work is in front of this commission at this point to move the needle, move the ball forward and really start the new future for Los Angeles and for Southern California as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
The next speaker will be Natasha Villa, who will be followed by Sal DiCostanzo. After Sal will be Mark Jurisick.
With the president's permission, for the people speaking after the person at the podium, if you could already be standing and ready to walk up to the podium so we can keep this moving, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President, gods and members of the board. My name is Natasha Villa, and I am the External Affairs Manager for the Pacific Merchant Shipping Association, which represents the ocean carriers and marine terminal operators that do business out of the port of Los Angeles. I want to express our strong support for LEDWP's scatter good modernization project and urge the board to certify its EIR and move forward with the project. Reliable and resilient power is absolutely vital for Los Angeles, and nowhere is truer than at the port of Los Angeles, the nation's busiest gateway. Every minute of lost power has immediate and costly consequences: delayed vessels, idle longshore labor, and cascading disruptions across national supply chains. Our members have already experienced the impact of power interruptions under existing conditions. As marine terminal operators continue investing heavily to transition to zero emissions cargo handling operations, our reliance on a consistent and high-quality power supply from LEDWP will only grow. The scatter good modernization is therefore not just a utility upgrade. It's a critical foundation for the port's zero emissions future. On behalf of PMSA, we strongly urge you to certify the EIR and approve the scatter good modernization project. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to balancing reliability with sustainability. We look forward to our continued collaboration with LEDWP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Sal DiCostanzo, and I'm the Port Liaison for the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, Local 13. We represent approximately 15,000 members in the cities of San Pedro, Wilmington, Long Beach Harbor Area, and Harbor City. Even though that is 20 to 25 miles from here, we are an integral part of this port. And I would like to personally thank Mr. Paul Habib for being that conduit and engaging with us down in the port. I'm here today to respectfully ask for your support for the scatter goods green hydrogen-ready modernization project. Reliable, dispatchable power is the bedrock of our economy and family-sustaining jobs. Scattergoods must be modernized because electrical demand growth continues unabated and we cannot afford to have blackouts in the city of LA. The ports alone will require six times the port that we are currently using in order to reach our clean energy goals. This will in turn be devastating for jobs and our economy if we cannot have reliable power which deters shippers from using our ports. The ILWU also supports the fact that scatter good-ready LA for 100% renewable energy and economy-wide decarbonization. We are already using hydrogen at the ports, and it is a huge improvement from a worker and community safety and health perspective. Projects that are hydrogen-ready like scatter good can help us to scale up local renewable hydrogen production, creating more jobs, a circular economy, and accelerate our transition away from fossil fuels. In a closing comment, I would like to add that while the port of LA and Long Beach is the largest port complex in the Western Hemisphere, it is also the cleanest in the world. However, our ports face competition from those in Canada and Mexico, as well as the ports of Texas, Florida, Georgia, and other East Coast ports that do not share our ambitions for clean air. So let's not let the perfect get in the way of the very, very, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
After Mark Jurisick, the next speaker will be Bruce Resnick. After Bruce will be Matt Dickinson.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Jurisick. I'm with the ILWU, just like my partner before me. My job is a little different. I handle all the sustainability issues and alternative fuels that are coming into the port, so much to the point that it's become 90% of what I do for the union. We do have a lot of projects down trying to become zero emissions in the port, but the biggest takeaway we have is hydrogen seems to be the answer for heavy-duty equipment that we do not, we cannot sustain any other way. And more importantly, hydrogen is becoming the energy source of the future as far as international scale goes. I've spoken on panels internationally on this. And one of the things that everyone's overlooking is that this is going to be the future. We are going to be exporting this through this port. And nothing would be worse than a blow to that emerging economy that this was going to be a part of Southern California than to sit there and take a project like scatter goods and give it a no vote. That would be a severe blow to what is going to be an emerging economy that's going to bring a lot more jobs, a lot more sustainability here. I'm very excited because I'm looking at something I never thought I'd be able to see in my life, which is us getting away from fossil fuels in the port. We're looking, we're on a track. If we keep going the way we are, that we might be able to meet the goal by 2040 to be able to go zero emissions out of the port of Los Angeles and set the standard for the world. But we need all partners on board, and we need the city and this department to be viable partners in that and not put up roadblocks to what is going to make us zero emission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bruce Resnick. After Bruce will be Matt Dickinson. After Matt will be Andrea Leon Grossman.
Bruce might have been double counted. I saw him leave earlier.
Okay. Matt Dickinson?
Matt Dickinson, I represent Phoenix Marine Services, Pier 300, Port of Los Angeles. I were a terminal operator down there. As you all are probably aware, we are staring down both barrels of a cleaner action plan plus, which is a good thing. And that requires us to be Phase 1, as the draft is written today, makes our cargo handling equipment required to be zero emissions by 2030. So I have two problems, but I need the scatter good power generation center to be approved, the EIR to be approved, the project to move forward. One is I have hydrogen machines currently that I can't get a reliable supply of hydrogen for. And every time I go to add more, the first question comes up is where's the hydrogen coming from? I don't have a good answer. And if I did have an answer to that, the next question is how much does it cost? I have an even worse answer to that. So the development of this project is going to encourage the market growth, and the market will in turn supply hydrogen for this project and also make it available for the ports. The second thing is, you know, we're at the end of the grid out there, and our decarbonization plan includes a lot of electrification. And that electrification can't occur without this sort of project moving forward and becoming a reality. And, you know, I get the safety concerns, something that, you know, is always in the forefront of my mind at a marine terminal. However, I can tell you that there's two other places in the United States that are doing this, New York and another place in Ohio. New York's already up to 44% of a blend in their turbine. And then there's probably 13 other ones I could name around the world. So this is not new. This is not something that we are, you know, inventing the wheel on. However, we can do it better and bigger than anyone else and LA-style. And I'll just leave you with Go Dodgers.
Andrea Leon Grossman, who will be followed by Connor Everett and an ironworker from Local 416.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman. I'm a ratepayer and also I am a Latina, Mexican-American. And I want to second what Bill Funderburke said about equity metrics. I think it is absolutely unconscionable that the board could be voting today on a project. And I quote that the details of this green hydrogen system in terms of the production, delivery, and storage infrastructure are currently unknown. How can someone vote on a final EIR with all these unknowns? And especially with like the hydrogen and the wire requirement. We know that we're still importing water from all over California, so this hydrogen needs water. Where is the water reliability going to come from? I have so many questions that were not answered in the final EIR. Moreover, I want to have Exhibit A. What is this? I received this at home. SoCalGas and DWP really need to break up. They're too cozy. When I was part of the LA 100 study, I was really shaken up, not only by SoCalGas sitting on that study, but also the fact that looking at the study in terms of how we're going to replace all these coastal plants that are burning gas was conducted by Worley Parsons. And Worley Parsons solely was looking at more combustion. And more combustion, really, at this point, we're looking at combining gas with hydrogen. And as someone just said, it's just use less gas, not really stop using gas. So this is just another way to keep us using gas, which is not acceptable. And by the way, inside of this package came another flyer in order to us for basically getting $1,500 to use for new gas appliances when we're trying to electrify our city. I just want to conclude right now by saying that DWP's scatter good final EIR isn't a roadmap to decarbonization. It's a fossil fuel era fantasy dressed in green language. It disregards science, size steps accountability, and risks compromising public health, public funds, and public trust. While cities across the world are proving that distributed, clean, affordable power is possible, LEDWP is doubling down on combustion, pipelines, and political convenience. Los Angeles deserves better, an energy future rooted in transparency, safety, and justice. It's time to demand leadership worthy of the climate crisis we face and the community this utility is supposed to serve. I'm urging you to vote no today, or at least delay the vote. Thank you.
Connor Everett? Local worker from... I'm sorry, Local 416? And Dr. Leah Garland?
Thank you very much, Connor Everett. And I would like to say, you know, I come here on the water side, so I'm concerned about the water impacts of this. This isn't to me a lot different than when ocean desalination came to DWP and we had unanswered questions. We're perpetuating the intakes, which I care in terms of the impacts on fisheries and our coastal generations, generators which are dinosaurs. So now we stack on hydrogen with unanswered questions for where the water's going to come from and what the impacts are going to be on the discharge as well. It's hard to be against apple pie after everything I've heard earlier today. You know, everyone makes it sound like it is the solution to green hydrogen, but to really understand what that means, I think we need to do more study. No one wants to study. We want to rush through with federal government cutting back on the hydrogen hubs and other costs that are not anticipated and the true outcome not clear. I think we should think long and hard before we do this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Connor.
We have approximately 35 speakers that remain. After Dr. Leah Garland will be Roberto Cabralas.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Randy Wetmore, Ironworkers Local 416, 433. I'm representing nearly 10,000 ironworkers across the Los Angeles area. So projects like scatter goods, I'm all about. I've worked on phases of that since I was 18 years old. I've got to work on with my father. So every time something comes along that's better for our community, better for our environment, you guys are the leaders of this. I've worked on several projects across the state, and it's always a question, well, what did DWP do that was different? Well, they got it done first. They got it done right way responsibly. So, you know, looking at the younger generations coming up underneath me that got to work on these projects as apprentices with me, I can at least know that they're going to go by this. And like I do with my kids, I go Doc Wyler. Hey, see that, kids? I built that. Yeah, yeah, Dad. We've seen a few of them you built. So then they're out there playing on the beach, hey, my dad built that. So it's not only that, it's just, it's bringing good jobs to all the trades in the Los Angeles area. It keeps our apprentices busy. It keeps our veterans coming home after they did their duty serving our country. Give them a spot right away to go work at. So we're all about projects like this, and we'd like to see your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Hello, I'm Dr. Leah Garland, a public health advocate, an environmental justice advocate, a ratepayer, and a mom of a six-year-old and resident of CD-11. I strongly urge you to vote no on this final EIR. And here are my three reasons why. One, because the children of this city deserve a livable future, and hydrogen is dangerous. And particularly, the kids near scatter good need not be the sacrificial lambs for political Hydrogen is just another fuel? No. It's volatile. It's flammable, and even more prone to leakage than methane. I'd just like to remind people, this is the 10-year anniversary of the blowout of Elisa Canyon. Side note, SoCalGas makes me sick. LEDWP's FEIR waves away explosion risks near critical infrastructure like LAX, the Hyperion wastewater plant, and nearby neighborhoods, as if Angelenos should feel safe. as if Angelenos should feel safe living next to a potential Hindenburg. I live in that impact zone with my daughter and all of her peers, classmates that participate in LAUSD system. Two, because the scientists at the DOE under Biden will attest, I know because I know many of them, hydrogen at this scale was never meant for municipalities to burn for local power. To use it as a city suggests is abusing this technology that the people who created it meant it for. Three, because the plan would continue our reliance on fossil fuels. In short, it will cost our city so much money, it will create stranded assets. You are locking in the future of my child and her classmates into a future that links us into SoCal Gas for Life.
The next speaker will be Roberto Cabralas, who will be followed by Charming Evelyn. After Charming will be Dr. Daniel Tabor.
Good morning again. Good to see you all. I'm Roberto Cabralas with Communities for a Better Environment. I'm here on behalf of a lot of our community members that aren't able to be here. I urge you to vote no on the Scattergood Draft EIR. This project is dangerous, expensive, polluting, and communities don't want it. I think when it comes to new technologies, it's important to understand that there's a level of impact that communities already suffer. In Wilmington, we have numerous sources of pollution that we live with on a daily basis. And this project is an essential, it's essentially putting our communities to be the guinea pigs of this technology. It hasn't existed anywhere else at this scale. Los Angeles is already in non-attainment for critical pollutants, including ozone and smog. And these impacts will exacerbate all already poor and air quality disproportionately impact the health of frontline communities living near such plants. Gas retirement is long overdue and transitioning to hydrogen is only building on our existing gas infrastructure that has historically negatively impacted communities of color. So this project will continue to cycle the harm to frontline communities. And that's why we need to look closely, the investments that we're doing. We're all looking at green alternative sources of energy production. I don't know if green hydrogen at this scale is what we need entirely right now. So I urge you again, from the environmental justice perspective and the communities that have already looked and lived with numerous sources. I think the retirement of fossil fuel-focused energy production is what we need to phase out, but really look at real innovative production. And this project is in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you for having me again. My name is Charming Evelyn. I chair the Water Committee for Sierra Club California and for the Local Chapter, Angeles Chapter, Alien Orange County. One of the hats I did not mention is that I'm also the Vice Chair of the Environmental and Social Justice Committee. So there are a couple of things I'm going to address. Let us address the water footprint. Where is this water going to come from? We did such a great thing earlier this morning. So are we negating this good thing, this 45, you know, million gallon per day plant? Where are we getting this water? We're trying to wean ourselves off imported water. But here we go, planning to use a lot of water for Scattergood. And let's take a look at equity, like the gentleman mentioned and others have mentioned today. Los Angeles has just moved, because of its smog, from severe to extreme. Someone here said it would bring better air. No, it will not. Hydrogen produces nitrous oxide. It produces three to five times more nitrous oxide than methane. How is that equitable? It is not. And you know who's going to pay for it? Our under-resourced, underserved communities. So let us not fool ourselves. The EIR does have alternatives. I am asking LADWP to please look more into these alternatives because we are doing a disservice to the people of LA. And I live in the city of LA. I am a ratepayer to LADWP. And I am an asthmatic. So do you know what that means for someone like me? Using three to five inhalers just because of the particulate in the air. So there is an effect. And we must pay attention to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Daniel Tabor, please step forward. Robert Shelton. After Robert Shelton will be Martha Davis. After Martha Davis will be Janice Lynn. Please form a line in the aisleway if you are going to speak soon. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Shelton, and I'm the CEO of H2C Safety Pipe, a hydrogen technology pipeline company based in Santa Barbara, as well as Vice President of the World Business Academy, a 35-year-old nonprofit that has written extensively on the need for both electrons and clean molecules to achieve resilient, decarbonized energy future. I'm here today to emphasize the importance of the Scattergood Modernization Project to ensuring electric reliability for the LA basin today, as well as positioning California to lead the transition to hydrogen tomorrow. For the past five years, my company has been developing technology to deliver hydrogen at scale without fear of leakage, without adding truck traffic to the freeways, and at a cost of transportation of less than 50 cents per kilogram from where it can be produced inexpensively to where, to a production site such as, to an off-take site such as Scattergood. We strongly support this project's modernization plan as essential for reliability now, as well as for preparing Los Angeles for a hydrogen-ready future. We commend your thoughtful EIR process and your long history of leadership in these critical areas and encourage you to continue this with your positive vote today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Davis, John Spock, and Janice Lynn.
Move this down just a little bit. Good afternoon, Martha Davis again for the Meadow Lake Committee. Having worked at a Southern California Water Agency for almost two decades, I know how hard it is to hear that a proposed project is not ready for approval. But that is the case today. The Scattergood modification proposal is a huge financial investment, and there are just too many questions that still can't be answered, even at the initial 30% blend of hydrogen and natural gas, which is just an interim step towards the goal of achieving 100% hydrogen generation. The community's questions, as you're hearing today, are legion. Who will produce the hydrogen? Where will it be produced? How much will it cost? How will it be transported? And what impacts will all of these actions cause? There were also local air quality concerns and safety concerns, especially for the communities that live close to the Scattergood plant. How much human and economic risk is LA taking on? Sometimes the best and most economic way to build energy resilience is when we simultaneously invest in a combination of strategies. As we heard this morning in energy, the green future lies in efficiency, battery, storage, demand response, and distributed energy resources, which you are also working on. When these options are combined, they can meet your goal of providing Los Angeles with a clean, resilient, and reliable energy system cost-effectively, and they merit a much closer look before a decision is made on the best path forward for Los Angeles. In closing, I urge you to take the unanswered questions raised by LA's communities seriously. Make sure all of the information you need is developed before acting and vote no today on the approval of the Scattergood Modification Final EIR. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Martha.
Janice Lynn.
I would like to respectfully swap places because this gentleman has to leave in 10 minutes. I'll just swap with him.
John Spock?
This guy over here, is that right?
Hi there. Thank you for letting me swap. My name is Kamal Premachandra. I'm the CEO of Hydrel Energy. We're a Los Angeles-based company delivering megawatt-scale hydrogen fuel cell power systems for ports, logistical hubs, and critical infrastructure across LA and California. Hydrel supports the Scattergood project because it strengthens the backbone of Los Angeles' power system while accelerating the growth of renewable hydrogen economy. Scattergood ensures reliable, dispatchable power for a city that's rapidly electrifying EV fleets, port infrastructure, transit systems, data centers, and other critical applications that can't afford brownouts or blackouts. By upgrading this plant to operate on hydrogen, on green hydrogen, LADWP will be founding, will be building the foundation of low-cost, locally-produced, clean fuel that will deliver, that will drive down energy prices for the entire region. For companies like Hydrel, Scattergood is a catalyst infrastructure. It creates steady hydrogen demand, scales production, and reduces the cost of fuel that powers our distributed zero-emission systems across Los Angeles. This project connects reliability, decarbonization, and economic growth. It keeps the lights on, creates jobs, and positions Los Angeles as a global leader in clean hydrogen and clean energy. On behalf of Hydrel, I urge the board to approve the Scattergood Modernization Project. It's a smart, scalable, and forward-looking path to a resilient, carbon-free Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Spock will speak next, followed by Janice Lynn. After Janice Lynn will be Oliver Kraus. Please form a line in the aisleway. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Spock. I'm a resident of Inglewood. I live downwind from Scattergood. And I am also living right next to the Inglewood Oil Field. What I'm here to ask you today is please, please, on behalf of the people who are suffering from asthma, from cancer, from living next to these stinking, leaking sources of fossil fuels, to reconsider your idea that by simply naming this green hydrogen, is this providing a green alternative for generation of electricity? We have at the Scattergood site, right across the road, a miles of beach and parking lots, which could all benefit from shading by solar. We have a, during the peak energy demand season, we have a very reliable on-wind, onshore wind source, which is begging to be harvested with windmills. And I don't see the sense of asking ratepayers of Los Angeles to help the fossil fuel industry develop a technology which is not proven and will not eliminate the use, the burning of methane and will also create the byproducts that we have been trying to eliminate from our environment. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Janice Lynn will speak next, Oliver Kraus after her, and Tim Kamer Mayer. Please form a line in the aisleway and maintain your, I'm sorry, and minimize your comments to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here from the Green Hydrogen Coalition. My name's Janice Lynn. We're an independent 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit whose mission is to transition away from fossil fuels economy-wide. I'm here to share my heartfelt thanks for your leadership, which is timely and super-duper important, and also voice my support for the Scattergood Modernization. LA can build a resilient and reliable power sector without sacrificing our LA 100 goals. Scattergood is that approach because it enables and strengthens our reliability. While demand for electricity is booming from data centers, from EVs, Scattergood also smartly prepares LA to transition away from fossil fuels over time by being hydrogen-ready. We know that rolling blackouts would be devastating to our clean energy transition, and we know that it'll be devastating to our economy. We must fight climate change and ensure reliability. More than ever, LA's role from a local, state, national, even global standpoint has never, ever been more important. Sources like solar and wind, as we know, are intermittent. So we need a fuel source that'll be there when the sun isn't shining and the wind's not blowing. These time periods can be addressed by renewable hydrogen, as you've heard from other speakers, is a commercially viable and scalable fuel that can match the timing of solar and wind to when we need it most, even across seasons. One thing that I want to emphasize for everybody in the room is that if we don't prepare ourselves and approve the Scattergood Modernization Project, the default source for our liability will be natural gas and sometimes combustion of diesel with emergency backup generators. And I'm pretty sure that's something nobody in this room supports. Thank you so much for your leadership and your I-vote.
Thank you.
Oliver, oh gosh. Oliver Kraus will be next, Tim Kamer Mayer. And after Tim will be Anthony, last name with a B. 21 speakers remain.
Good afternoon. My name is Oliver Kraus, and I am the Technical Director for Fieldpack, a small cleantech startup based here in Los Angeles. And I'm here to vote, vouch my support for the Scattergood Modernization Project. So we provide battery system generator replacements essentially for film production here in Los Angeles. So I've personally seen how important it is to keep the lights on and keep the cameras rolling and sort of the financial consequences if that doesn't happen. Personally speaking, we charge our batteries from the grid. So grid reliability is also critical for us as a company and is the underpinning of our reputation of reliability, which is something that generators are often not so great at. So because of that, I strongly urge you to support and vote I in favor of the Scattergood Modernization Project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Kamer, and I am the Director of Policy and Regulatory Affairs for the Green Hydrogen Coalition. Commissioners, I want to start by thanking you. We know this project has been discussed for years. It has probably been one that you have spent many hours on, days, months, weeks. I don't want to say years, but maybe, all trying to find the right answer. And I want to thank staff as well for putting in the thousands of hours to go through this ERI process and to answer many of the questions that have been here that people have asked about. Commissioners, let's be clear here. Demand is growing. As someone who used to work at the California Independent System Operator, I can tell you that demand is ever exponentially growing and is not planning to stop or slow down. There is a reason why the state has been requiring and contracting out, procuring thousands, and I mean tens of thousands of new megawatts that have to come online in the next 10 years. While LADWP is its own balancing area authority, in the same way that when the tide rises, all ships ride, when the tide lowers, so do all other ships. I would point out that the Department of Energy just recently announced that they're terminating a $600 million grant to upgrade transmission lines across the state. Again, it doesn't affect your balancing authority directly, but it's leading to a direct constraint. With this massive amount of exponential demand growing, there is a need to get in front of it. This isn't even thinking about AI or all of the offshore wind and all of the other projects that will be required, which means there is a need for a smart approach that balances affordability while also keeping our climate goals. And Commissioners, that's Scattergood. Scattergood modernizes the project to actually clean up our air quality to ensure resilience and reliability for all Angelenos and residents and impacting indirectly the rest of California as well. Because let's be honest, when California energy problems, they came to the LADWP for help. So it's about sharing and being a part of a larger grid relationship. And it's also about how do we meet our climate goals? The green ready, the green hydrogen-ready modernization, if I may please continue, and I will finish. I will finish my thought, is an opportunity to not only address climate issues, modernization, jobs, and improve air outcomes, it opens the door for clean renewable energy when it's time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I request you support this.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Anthony, last name B, who will be followed by Sonia Verhagen. After Sonia will be Jason Harris. Please form a line in the aisleway. Two minutes, please.
My name is Avery Barnaby, and I can't read my handwriting either, so neither here nor there. I'm Avery Barnaby. I'm a longtime Los Angeles area resident. I live close to the Scattergood Plant. I also work for a hydrogen developer. Much of California's energy infrastructure is very old and bordering on obsolete. Our refineries, the ones that are still open, all date from World War II or earlier. The Chevron El Segundo refinery is just a few blocks from Scattergood. Recently experienced a major explosion on site. Mercifully, no one was injured. This is especially alarming as our refineries are all in urban areas. We need to replace all of our energy infrastructure. Scattergood is an excellent first step. Energy security. California imports substantial amounts of electricity, crude oil, and natural gas to feed its economy. We import about a quarter of our electricity, three-quarters of our crude oil to feed our refineries, and 90% of our natural gas to heat our homes and help generate electricity. Much of our oil is shipped in from overseas. We do not want our Pacific shorelines fouled by crude oil. Tens of billions of dollars leave the state every year for the benefit of others for electricity, gas, and crude oil. Much of this goes outside the nation. In California, we have a simple choice. We can create a 21st-century energy system throughout the state that provides reliable, clean energy, creates jobs and careers, and keeps our hard-earned dollars in state. Conversely, we can send our dollars and jobs out of state and hope our outdated energy infrastructure can hold up indefinitely. It is completely unrealistic to expect our increasingly outdated energy infrastructure to provide energy safely, economically, in an environmentally responsible manner. We need to modernize our entire state energy infrastructure, and the Scattergood Modernization Project is a great way to start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia Verhagen, who will be followed by Jason Harris. After Jason Harris will be Lawrence Nelson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, energy leaders, and local community members. My name is Sonia Verhagen. I am the Chief Commercial Officer at Element Resources, a California green hydrogen developer. Today I want to share with you that there are several green hydrogen, electrolytic hydrogen, off-grid hydrogen projects that are postured to deliver volumes in 2028 ahead of the Scattergood Modernization Project completion. These projects are all in the Antelope Valley, and they are clear options to supply Scattergood for blending purposes. And they look forward to collaborating and partnering for the story for grid reliability, grid resiliency, and energy security, a benefit for us all. So thank you for your leadership, your time today, and your I-vote.
Thank you.
Jason Harris, who will be followed by Lawrence Nelson. After Lawrence Nelson is Dr. Anita Singupta.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jason Harris. I lead development at Novo Hydrogen. We are a 100% green hydrogen project developer where we are actively developing a project in the Antelope Valley, and I'm here in support of the Scattergood Modernization Project. I've spent 15 years developing renewable energy projects from residential solar hot water to utility-scale wind, and this current project will power electrolyzers exclusively with co-located solar behind the meter to split water into 100% green hydrogen. This project will be sited on vacant and agricultural land while we use approximately 10% of the current water consumed in ag operations. We are targeting an in-service date of 2029, and I tell you all this to underscore that green hydrogen is being developed, and it is a reality. LEDWP's modernization of the Scattergood facility is essential for keeping Los Angeles reliable while remaining on track for 100% clean energy. As the city electrifies from EVs to homes and industry, demand for firm, round-the-clock power is growing, and Scattergood helps ensure reliability without backsliding into fossil fuels. Modernization, modernizing Scattergood's repurposes proven infrastructure rather than forcing costly new build-outs and helping keep rates low and stable. And by making it hydrogen-ready, LEDWP ensures this asset becomes cleaner over time. Novo Hydrogen is already investing locally to supply cost-competitive green hydrogen for projects like Scattergood, supporting jobs, improving air quality, and strengthening the regional clean energy ecosystem. This project keeps the lights on and positions Los Angeles as a global leader in reliable renewable power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lawrence Nelson. After Lawrence will be Dr. Anita Singupta. After will be Zen Dubin.
All right. Good afternoon to you all. My name is Lawrence Nelson, and I'm a graduate student researcher from the Clean Energy Institute at the University of California, Irvine. And on the behalf of my colleagues at the institute, in service of our community and neighboring communities, I would like to ask for your support of the Scattergood Modernization Project. Because as Southern California makes the very logistically difficult transition towards being a highly renewable and zero-emission community in all sectors, the transport and reliability of electricity has never been more important. All of us in the basin are dealing with the impacts of a growing number of natural disasters and poor air quality, which is a result of local carbon emission hotspots like LAX, the Port of Long Beach, the Port of LA, although good work is being done there, and in general, power plants, refineries, and medium-to-heavy-duty transportation, all of which are proving to be very difficult areas to decarbonize. But I and many other researchers have been working on decarbonizing these areas, and we all agree that securing grid reliability and on-demand electricity through some kind of renewable, zero-carbon emission, and fueled dispatchable power generation is crucial. And the Scattergood Modernization Project fits this role of local-fueled power generation and wind transition from natural gas to 100% renewable green hydrogen, the Scattergood units will have zero carbon emissions, zero volatile organic compound emissions, zero sulfur oxide emissions, zero particulate emissions, and very little nitrogen oxide emissions. And I want to note that many studies have shown that for controlled hydrogen combustion, which happens in gas turbines, they have the same, if not less, nitrogen oxide emissions than what we would get from natural gas combustion. And it's not a property of hydrogen itself, the nitrogen oxide emissions, but it's a property of air under high pressure and temperature, which is already being controlled in gas turbines. Additionally, the NOx emissions from LEDWP plants is around or less than 3% of all NOx emission sources around LA and the basin, which comes to my next point, that Scattergood will enable a much larger local impact by aiding the decarbonization of neighboring sectors by providing reliable power and supporting the growth of the hydrogen market to completely replace fossil fuels and support other renewable energies on our grid. So I ask for your support, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Anita Singupta, who will be followed by Zen Dubin. After Zen will be Jay Perpalli. Please form a line in the aisleway.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. I'm Dr. Anita Singupta. I am Research Professor of Astronautical Engineering at the University of Southern California. I have another role. I'm a member of the United Nations Council of Engineers for the Green Energy Transition, but I'm primarily here as an Angelino. I'm a local, small-business owner. I'm CEO and founder of Hydroplane, and we're developing hydrogen fuel cell power plants to actually decarbonize heavy-duty transport. We actually have one system built into an aircraft right now. We're designing a system for the state of New York to decarbonize maritime by having hydrogen-powered, basically, sea vessels, and we believe that we can use this to also decarbonize rail, trucking, and the entire heavy-duty transport logistics sector. I'm here to support the Scattergood green energy project. I think this project will reduce emissions. It will ensure power reliability. It will scale affordable energy for Los Angeles residents. Renewable hydrogen supplied at scale can also be supplied to the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, as well as to Los Angeles' world airports, to displace diesel use, which is probably the worst thing that's out there, and ultimately can get its way into the heavy-duty trucking sector and eventually fuel our aircraft. Ultimately, Scattergood will expand green hydrogen production, and that demand will promote adoption of hydrogen fuel cell technology to power vehicles. I drove my hydrogen fuel cell car here in the parking lot, so it's very safe, very good technology. And ultimately, we want to drive down the cost of hydrogen because it will facilitate technology adoption, and also it will help small businesses like mine to create jobs and create new workforce opportunities for universities in the electric BEV and HEV electric vehicle space. And ultimately, there's been a huge shift, unfortunately, in the federal government for funding of these projects, so it's more important than ever that the state of California and the county of Los Angeles make its commitments to support green energy, green energy and green hydrogen technology projects to help us as a community to basically heal our planet. So thank you.
Thank you.
Zen Dubin, who will be followed by Jay Perpalli. After Jay Perpalli, Jonah Henry, please. Two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. I'm here representing a local chapter of Third Act, which is Bill McKibben's nonprofit for democracy and climate activists, and I'm here today to urge the LEDWP board to vote "no" on the Scattergood EIR. This project is dangerous, expensive, polluting, and communities don't want it. I'd like to say a word about demand, which we don't talk about that much, but since 2002, I've been trying to reduce my demand on all fossil fuels by driving an electric vehicle powered by the solar on my roof when I'm not taking the E train or just driving less. The money being spent on this risky project, which prolongs reliance on fossil fuels, should be invested in truly clean, non-combustion technology that will ensure LA will meet its 2035 clean energy goals. Please reject the Scattergood EIR.
Thank you very much.
Jay Perpalli, Jonah Henry. After Jonah Henry will be Rodney Boone. Please join the line in the aisleway.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Perpalli. I'm a legal fellow at Communities for a Better Environment, representing the people of Wellington, which are LA City residents and taxpayers. I'd say something I'm surprised, but they're like, come to kind of get used to the greenwashing that happens in the hydrogen industry. Green hydrogen is only green compared to gray hydrogen that's formed from methane reformation and other techniques. There's only really a few ways to make green hydrogen. I'm not going to go into them because there's enough flaws in the EIR that I needed to devote a better amount and a half to that. This EIR has been presented to secret practitioners and found to have plenty of faults that would have left an agency that was in good faith review a lot of time to work through. In six months, all the agency did was say that no revisions are required, that any further discussion of speculative topics that are unknown, like the supply of hydrogen, which actually, from today's presence of our business industry colleagues, is not unknown, which is significant new information that justifies the recirculation of an EIR. There is not substantial evidence to support this final EIR. There is new information that exists, and you need to recirculate it and allow for another round of public comment. The EIR says things are of little value and unknown and not worth talking about for decision-makers in the public. Nothing could be further from the truth. This is a piecemeal project with a faulty baseline that lies about the fact that it's a gas-repowering project that is an expensive boondoggle being placed on the ratepayers of Los Angeles to support a garbage project that is designed to make natural gas a legacy-stranded asset. We will see the city attorney's office hopefully, probably, pretty soon, when we file an appeal with the city council, and if needed, after that, administer the appeal of what looks like will be a yes vote. We will see you in court to debate the secret efficiencies of this between a neutral arbiter rather than a pre-commitment to an outcome with an EIR that was designed to fulfill that outcome and not a fair process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonah Henry, who will be followed by Rodney Boone. After Rodney Boone will be Kathryn Rosen. Please join the line in the aisleway. Please adhere to the two-minute maximum.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Jonah Henry. I'm a resident of CD-10, and I'm a volunteer with Sunrise Movement Los Angeles, where a youth-led organization fighting for a fast and equitable transition away from fossil fuels. Although we are not opposed to green hydrogen as a matter of principle, we strongly oppose the Scattergood Modernization Project, and we requested the Board of Commissioners to vote "no" on the approval of the final EIR. I'd like to begin by sharing a statistic. From 2023 to 2024, the quantity of electricity that California created by burning fossil gas decreased from 94.2 to 86.5 terawatt-hours. This is an 8% decrease in the span of a single year. And separate from LEDWP on the KISO grid, fossil gas consumption in the spring of 2024 was 40% lower than it was in the spring of 2023. This is due to the remarkable growth that our state has achieved in solar, wind, and utility-scale battery storage capacity, as well as demand-response mechanisms like we were listening to from the presentation earlier this morning. We urge LEDWP to continue to accelerate this trend by investing in renewable technologies that have already proven themselves to be reliable at the commercial scale. Green hydrogen, by contrast, is an emerging technology whose supply and price are highly susceptible to volatile market conditions and the availability of federal and state subsidies at every step of the green hydrogen supply chain. $800 million for a power plant upgrade is a substantial amount, but the opportunity cost of that investment is unacceptable. In short, the Scattergood Modernization Project is not a smart financial investment for this utility, and it will not displace fossil gas from our grid at the pace that is required to effectively mitigate the climate crisis. In the time that I have left, I'd like to just address the hurricane that's hitting Jamaica right now. We are living through the climate emergency. It is happening right now, right here in front of us, and we have to be very smart and strategic about how we're going forward, and green hydrogen is not the answer. And so I would like to urge LEDWP to please pause for a minute to really seriously reconsider the other alternatives for Scattergood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney Boone, who will be followed by Kathryn Rosen. After Kathryn Rosen is Ernesto Madrano. Please join the line. Please adhere to the two-minute maximum.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Rodney Boone. I live in San Pedro with my wife, and we've been LEDWP customers for nearly 40 years. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Scattergood EIR. I'm here today to urge the board to vote "no." I have deep reservations about the plan to convert Scattergood's Units 1 and 2 to burn a mixture of fossil gas and green hydrogen, eventually perhaps burning 100% hydrogen. It asks the LEDWP ratepayers like us and other people in the greater LA basin to be guinea pigs in a large-scale experiment regarding hydrogen procurement, distribution, storage, and combustion. The EIR admits that the technology for grid-scale green hydrogen is not proven. We don't know when the hydrogen will be available and available in the large and reliable amounts required by the project, when the new turbines that would be needed for the project can be obtained, how it will be manufactured and transported to Scattergood safely, it's highly combustible, and without leaks. The EIR excludes these issues from the scope of the EIR, sidestepping these core difficulties with hydrogen. And so what we're faced with is just, you know, we have the green hydrogen industry here today to fill in those blanks, but nobody's really evaluating those claims. Those are just publicity. And I think this is such a huge question now about, you know, moving to hydrogen that it really needs to be thought out carefully and analyzed about what the total impact is going to be for the LA basin. It's hugely expensive. It starts at $800 million and goes up from there. Currently, hydrogen is three to ten times the cost of fossil gas. You know, if this turns into a financial boondoggle with a hydrogen-related cost falling on ratepayers like us, this will be one more major scandal that will tarnish the reputation of the LEDWP. So thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I urge you to reject this.
Thank you.
Kathryn Rosen will be the next speaker, followed by Ernesto Madrano. After Ernesto will be Daryl Gale. Please join the line. Please adhere to the two-minute maximum. Approximately 10 speakers remain.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathryn Ronan, and I am a ratepayer and a Power Savers Program participant. I was disappointed to see the 2024 LEDWP content label released recently shows that LEDWP is lagging behind the state as a whole in adopting renewables. The 2024 Power Mix for California shows 45% eligible renewables, while LEDWP is only at 41%. In 2023, we were leading the way, but now we have dropped back. I'm wondering why that is. Is it because we're continuing to double down on producing electricity using methane gas? Are we relying too much on gas to fill in the gaps and meet peak demand? Are we relying too much on gas to fill in the gaps and meet peak demand? That's the way we've always done it, so I can see the attraction, but it's not a path to meet our green energy goals. It's a dead end. So is a methane-hydrogen mix. In fact, burning hydrogen will make our air quality worse and have a very minimal impact on greenhouse gas emissions. Gas plant retirements are long overdue, and transitioning to hydrogen is only building on our existing gas infrastructure that has historically negatively impacted frontline communities, which already bear the brunt of air pollution. Moreover, as you know, the source and cost of hydrogen for scatter good are currently unknown, and hydrogen production requires more energy than it produces, as well as large quantities of water. Let's stop thinking of hydrogen as a viable path to 100% green energy and focus on other technologies. It is not LADWP's mission to, quote, "anchor demand for hydrogen in the LA basin." It should not be a burden for the LA ratepayers to finance the development of the hydrogen industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernesto Madrano. Daryl Gale, please step forward. After Daryl Gale will be Andrea Vega. After Andrea Vega will be Sal Zambrano.
I'm Daryl Gale. Why? Why do we need scatter good hydrogen? In LA County, we've already got over 7,000 idle and active wells spewing methane, benzene, formaldehyde, and too many other nasty compounds and chemicals to mention. And I only have two minutes. Now we consider hydrogen? We haven't cleaned up or recovered from the January fires. Why put another combustible chemical pollutant into the mix? Why do we need this expensive, complicated, unnecessary project? Vote no on this Halloween horror.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Vega. I'm a senior organizer with Food and Water Watch. I'm also an LA resident and an LADWP ratepayer. I'm here today to urge the LADWP board to vote no on the scatter good EIR, because despite what you've heard today from developers and industry board members, our communities don't want this project, and they've said so consistently at previous board meetings and at DWP's LA 100 community meetings. Burning 100% hydrogen fuel in a power plant has never been done to this scale before, meaning that DWP is banking on and investing in a technology that's risky and unproven, and communities who are already burdened by pollution would be a testing ground, all while us ratepayers foot the bill. And now that the Department of Energy has cut federal funding for the Arches Hydrogen Hub, ratepayers will be stuck having to bear the $800 million cost of this risky project, all at a time when LA families are struggling with rising costs. It would be deeply irresponsible of this board to approve such a project. And in addition to being costly, this project is dangerous. Hydrogen is more prone to leakage and even more flammable than natural gas. And I am so thankful that one of the folks here today mentioned the Aliso Canyon gas blowout, because emergency situations like this are not hypothetical situations. Those are realities that are already being impacted, that are already being faced by impacted communities in the Los Angeles area. The scatter good EIR does not answer for these types of safety measures. This EIR does not sufficiently address what happens if there is a leak, what happens if there is some kind of tragedy to befall the LA area because of this project. So please prioritize community health, prioritize ratepayers, and reject this EIR.
Thank you.
Sal Zambrano, who will be followed by Daryl Clark. After Daryl Clark will be Kendall Chapel.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for your time. I am Sal Zambrano, Assistant Chief Harbor Engineer at the Port of Los Angeles, and I speak on behalf of the port in support of modernizing the scatter good generating station. The port also submitted a formal letter in strong support of modernizing scatter good generating station. Modernizing scatter good is essential to advancing the city's LA 100 clean energy goals and ensuring long-term power liability for critical port infrastructure as the port transitions to zero emission port operations. Scatter goods modernization will deliver wide-ranging benefits to the port and the broader region, including increased power reliability and operational growth, clean energy integration, and improved grid resilience and climate adaptability. The port depends on stable, responsive, LADWP power for safe and continuous operations. Therefore, increasing LADWP's grid capacity by modernizing scatter good is vital to supporting the port's Clean Air Action Plan, which relies heavily on electrification to achieve zero emission port operations. The port's support for this initiative is a testament to our ongoing partnership with LADWP and our shared commitment to building a resilient, sustainable energy future. We respectfully urge LADWP to move forward with the modernization of the scatter good generating station to ensure reliable power for the part of Los Angeles and to support a smooth transition to 100% clean energy. Thank you for your attention this afternoon.
Thank you.
Daryl Clark, who will be followed by Kendall Chapel. After Kendall Chapel will be Vanessa Vasquez. Please form a line in the aisle way. Please adhere to the two-minute maximum. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Daryl Clark with the Sierra Club, and thank you for your patience in listening to us and not cutting us to 30 seconds each. Okay. Really, this is just a new gas peaker plant. That's the reality of it. The happy hydrogen words you've heard overlook basic physics. That makes green hydrogen use here rather absurd. Imagine, you start with renewable electricity, then you waste over half of its energy to make hydrogen through electrolysis, and then you burn the hydrogen to make electricity again. What a concept. Waste half of your energy for why? Also note, leaking hydrogen is a secondary greenhouse gas. Hydrogen failed for cars. It's really the fuel of never, not the future. What you need is better storage. Round the corner on the wall, I noticed a photo of the Castake Power Plant. Pumped storage, medium term. I got to visit that when it was almost finished over 50 years ago. Short-term battery storage keeps getting cheaper. And for my show and tell, it's all in Stanford University Professor Mark Z. Jacobson's very comprehensive textbook, Wind, Water, Solar, and Storage. You don't need combustion power. In this case, figure out how to make storage work. You've got Castake. You've got battery storage coming online, cheaper and cheaper. We don't need this. So that's my please vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl.
Kendall Chapel, who will be followed by Vanessa Vasquez, then Julia Dowell. Approximately five speakers remain.
Hello, my name is Kendall Chappell, and I am a Los Angeles resident and ratepayer. I'm here on behalf of Communities for a Better Environment. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm here to urge the LADWP board to vote no on the scatter good project. Approving this project disregards environmental health impacts to frontline communities. Hydrogen combustion produces three to five times as much nitrogen oxide as methane. The nitrogen oxide emissions from hydrogen combustion lead to ozone and smog, which will exacerbate already poor air quality and disproportionately impact the health communities near the plant. This project is also costly. The $800 million price tag doesn't even include the cost of hydrogen fuel, transportation, or production. This cost will also, is only, also only to add 30% of hydrogen capacity, and the rest is 70% methane. Furthermore, because Los Angeles is an extreme nonattainment for several critical pollutants, including ozone, the increase in emissions from this project will lead LADWP to have to pay increased fees annually under the Clean Air Act, which will in turn increase rates for ratepayers like myself, who never went to this project to begin with. While approval for this project will benefit fossil fuel companies by prolonging the need for fossil fuel infrastructure and extending our reliance on natural gas indefinitely, it will hurt the communities you serve. Thank you for your time. I hope you will listen to the community here today and reject this EIR. Please prioritize environmental justice, climate, and health by pursuing cleaner alternatives over another risky combustion technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa Vasquez, Julia Dowell, and Alicia Rivera.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Vasquez. I'm here today on behalf of Communities for a Better Environment. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm here to urge the LADWP board to vote no on the scatter good EIR. This project is dangerous, expensive, polluting, and communities don't want it. This project is risky because it involves new and unproven technology that prolongs reliance on fossil fuels and the negative impacts experienced by frontline communities. LADWP did not address hydrogen production or transportation in their EIR, which is entirely speculative. This highlights the uncertainty associated with the availability of green hydrogen, hydrogen fuel. This project risks prolonging reliance on gas plants in LA or utilizing gray hydrogen made from fossil fuels. This is not a climate-friendly solution, and it is not a community-friendly solution. As some folks said before me, Los Angeles is already an extreme nonattainment for critical pollutants, and frontline communities near the plant already disproportionately experience poor air quality, and this project will exacerbate these conditions, further harming overburdened communities. Gas retirement is long overdue, and we cannot allow this project to build on existing gas infrastructure. Given the fact that low-income communities have historically been negatively impacted by gas infrastructure, this project will continue the cycle of harm to frontline communities who do not want this project. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will listen to the community here today and reject this EIR.
Thank you.
Julia Dowell, Alicia Rivera. After Alicia will be William Coons.
Hello, President Katz, Vice President McGraw, and Commissioner Katz. My name is Julia Dowell. I'm a senior campaign organizer with Sierra Club. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm here today to urge the LADWP board to vote no on this EIR. This project is dangerous, expensive, polluting, and as you can see, communities don't want it. According to a 2023 presentation to the city council, this project alone is estimated to cost $800 million. This cost does not include the cost of hydrogen fuel itself, the production, transportation infrastructure, or the skyrocketing costs of new combustion turbines. A recent GridLab study has found that the price of gas turbines are continuing to increase and are not anticipated to decline in the foreseeable future. Therefore, the cost of this project could likely be double what was initially projected. Additionally, S&amp;P recently estimated that delays for getting new combustion turbines could be up to seven years. There are alternatives to hydrogen combustion that have not been fairly considered. The EIR does not exhaust all of the feasible alternatives to the proposed project. The EIR should have evaluated other long-duration energy storage technology with higher battery densities, as well as vertical stacking of batteries. Sierra Club and our partners proposed a combination alternative of battery storage, demand response, and distributed energy resources that was not fairly considered by LADWP. Additionally, product alternatives were dismissed in the EIR for reasons that apply as much, if not more so, to the project itself, including nascent technology, time of development, and uncertainty. Finally, without evaluating where this green hydrogen will come from, which is not currently market available, this project risks becoming one of the largest investments in new gas in California in recent years, and it is not in line with the city's climate goals. The last thing I want to say is that I heard a lot of comments today about how we need scatter good to spur the hydrogen market. That is not LADWP's job. Their job is to serve their ratepayers and meet their city-mandated climate goals. I hope that today, the board will stand with the community that is here today and not the hydrogen industry, and reject this EIR. There are true clean energy solutions. We have proposed some, and those should be pursued instead of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alicia Rivera. The last speaker will be William Coons.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Rivera. I'm an organizer in Wilmington with Communities for a Better Environment. Wilmington is a frontline community already suffering asthma, respiratory illnesses, and cancer due to being close to oil drilling and oil refining, the port, and everything else, and already, you know, leaving over a freeway of pipelines. This project is going to need more infrastructure and more pipelines underground, so increasing the freeway type of movement under us. And pipeline had already burst, you know, that had been out of work for over 20 years, and suddenly, you know, they just, a little purse, a little pierce would make them, you know, start oozing oil. People are already suffering. I'm a grandma of two, three-year-olds, three-year-olds, and people here, you know, probably want to have children, already have children, or are grandparents like me. And I am thinking about the future for them. And I educate communities about the impact of pollution so that they can build consciousness about, you know, how we, you know, push for a better, a better future for us. And I see the condition, the crisis of the water everywhere globally. The water is either polluted, or, you know, it's gold now. All these corporations are taking over the rivers and everything, and people are suffering because water is going to cause wars already has caused, you know, is causing tremendous, you know, difficult condition, people causing migration because they can't harvest anymore right here. We don't need to go further. Look at the fires that we just went over. We need water. Why do we need to use more water to create energy? The output is not, you know, is not enough by using all these resources. Why do we want to create this project? I mean, you're the water and power. You should know more about water than all of us. I'm a ratepayer, and I know that my grandchildren will be paying for this project in the future. And so I don't want to leave that to my children and to everybody's children and to humanity. We should be looking about, or, you know, survival, really. And this is, you know, industry is here pushing for all this money that Biden provided. Well, this government has taken away this money. Who's going to be paying for that, you guys? I mean, you know, come out with better projects that you have sustainability, right, and that are less costly, and that are really, all of us should be thinking about survival. You know, what are we going? We only have like 10 more years, you guys. Look at 10 more years. And this methane is more potent than CO2, warming up the climate, making it impossible for human survival, for the species, for everything. I am here to, you know, talk to you. There are better alternatives. You have not considered it. You hear all these points today. You have enough to go back and say, you know, is this really feasible? Should we put in this, you know, burden on the taxpayers when we are running with budget deficit, right? Water crisis, global warming, you know, pollution. We, people are dying because of the air. I know children in Wilmington near the refineries missing school. They can't breathe. They get, you know, it's an inhaler for many people, $15, $20, that's what they cost now. They don't have it. A lot of people are being chased by ice. They're not working. They cannot even afford the inhaler.
Thank you very much.
So please reconsider the alternatives that Sierra Club and other organizations are putting for you to consider, that are better, that are less risky, that are going to really provide what we need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last speaker for this item is William Coons.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. My name is William Coons, and I'm the director of industrial projects for Southern California Pipe Trades. I represent roughly 18,000 members and 10,000 members in the LA County alone, and we support this project. The scatter good modernization project shows that LADWP can meet its 2035 clean energy goals while keeping the work safe, union-built, and locally staffed. Hundreds of skilled trade, skilled Hundreds of skilled tradesmen and women will modernize this green facility with green hydrogen-ready technology, ensuring grid stability and clean, reliable power for Los Angeles. This is how we move towards a carbon-free future while protecting good union jobs in the communities we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a brief break? Can we take a brief break?
Yeah, we'll take, we're gonna actually, we'll take a five-minute break now. We're gonna take a break, then we'll do ratepayer advocate, then we're gonna go to the next one.
Members of the audience, take your seats. We will begin momentarily. Members of the audience, please take your seats. Please also maintain silence at the dais. To the audience. Switch it up. Hello? Please maintain silence for the next 20 seconds while we go online for our broadcast. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present. Commissioner Nurey Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Three board members present. Akwam. Fourth president. You're on item in six.
In six?
Yes. I believe that there is a management presentation.
Yep. That's correct. I have some comments to introduce.
Okay.
So we are here today to talk to you about the Scattergood Sequa EIR. We're very excited to be here today for this opportunity. Thank you, Vice President McGraw, for sticking around for one more meeting to support. We're very excited to share the progress of the Scattergood Generating Station Units One and Two Green Hydrogen Ready Modernization Project, and to present to the board for consideration the project's environmental impact report. This project is critical to LADWP's clean energy transition as it helps us preserve a key power system asset, meet our clean energy goals, and ensures reliability for our customers. The Scattergood Modernization Project is the number-one priority on the Power Systems Top Ten Priority List. This project is essential to maintaining grid reliability and resiliency, not only to the West Los Angeles service area but the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Martin Marufo from IBW Local 18 for coming to support this important project. Thank you to Marty Adams, our former general manager, for coming to support as well. And with that, I give you Mr. Jason Rondue, Assistant General Manager of Power Planning, Engineering, and Operations. Use your lineman voice.
You gotta go kinda close to it. Good afternoon.
Yeah, there you go.
Good evening. I don't know.
Definitely don't sing, though.
Thank you, Board President, Vice President, Commissioner. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present. As Dave mentioned, I'm Assistant General Manager over Planning and Operations. I report to Dave Hanson. And I'm very excited to present to you for your consideration the certification of the Environmental Impact Report and the adoption of the mitigation monitoring program, and to approve Alternative Four within this EIR. There's a lot of discussion about the need for Scattergood. There's a lot of discussion about the benefits and the potential risks and the concerns. And I think it's extremely important for us to lay the foundation and talk about what has led us to arrive at the need for this project. We, as a city and as a utility, have a goal of 100% clean energy by 2035. We are leaders in renewable energy, and we want to continue to be leaders in renewable energy. And to do that, to lead, we need to do it in a way that's affordable and equitable and is reliable and resilient. So I'm going to talk briefly about what has led us to this point today. And then I'm going to give a brief overview of the project itself and then close it out with a very brief summary of the Environmental Impact Report. And of course, I'll be available to answer questions. Our RPS and our clean energy leadership started a couple decades ago, early 2000s. We were 3% renewable. And at one point in the early 2000s, we were 50% coal. Fifty, five-zero percent coal. In 29 days, we will be, we will receive our very last coal-powered electron. So in 29 days, we'll have no coal in our portfolio. Today, we are over 60% clean energy. Just this year, we made a massive stride with the commissioning of the Elan Solar and Storage Project. It, over the course of an entire year, provides 7% of the utility's power to the city of Los Angeles. This morning, before I came to board, well before the sun was, you know, high up in the sky in Mojave, it was generating, Elan was generating almost 15% of the entire power for the city of Los Angeles. Looking forward, as I mentioned, we have a goal of 100% by 2035. We also have an interim, very ambitious, goal of 80% by 2030, five years away. So what led us to the goals that we have today and what led us to the portfolio of projects that we have today is an industry-leading study that many of the commenters have talked about, the LA 100 Study. This was done in conjunction with 50, probably at this point, more than 50 members of, 50 leaders within the city, from academia, from the environmental organizations, community-based organizations, labor, and many other folks. This was done in conjunction with the National Renewable Energy Lab and our own in-house engineers. And we worked side-by-side with the advisory group. They got to see how complex power planning is, and we got to see very closely what their concerns and what their hopes and what their priorities would be for a clean energy future for the city of Los Angeles. This study, over the course of several years and over $20 million, led us to several pillars of our clean energy transformation that no matter what our strategy is, no matter what year that we want to get to 100% by, no matter what that approach is, there are pillars by which we need to build this clean energy future. That includes customer programs. And we've long been a leader in solar. We were typically the number-one city for solar in the United States, eight out of the last 10 years, probably going to continue to be in that position. And that's because we're one of the few utilities that continues to have net metering. We are the only utility that has a feed and tariff program at the scale that we have. We also have been a longtime leader in energy efficiency, especially energy efficiency programs that target multifamily and affordable housing. We also, today, you know, thanks to the decision that this board has made to adopt a significant expansion of our demand-response portfolio, we will now lead in that area as well. We also lead in renewable energy adoption, as I mentioned, Elan Solar and Storage. But it's not just the commissioning of that project, which, by the way, we're very, very proud of because we got that thing done through the COVID crisis, the supply chain crisis. We still deliver that. It's the lowest-priced renewable energy of that scale likely in the country and likely in perpetuity. But this year alone, this calendar year alone, we signed two more power purchase agreements despite all of the massive headwinds that we were seeing in the federal government, the issues around tariffs, the questions in the industry. We have continued to lead on renewable energy. Something that's a little less tangible but is equally, if not more important, is the backbone of our entire system. It's our transmission and our distribution system. We can sign all the power purchase agreements that we want, but we need to build transmission and we need to make sure that our distribution system is there to deliver that power reliably. Some of the areas that we have really led on transmission in this board approved a $1.5 billion expansion of our McCullough-Victorville Transmission Line to bring in hundreds of megawatts of new renewables into the basin. We also have dozens of local transmission projects, which I'll talk about a little bit later, rely on local and basin capacity to make sure that we can actually build those dozens of transmission lines. And all of this is to bring renewable power into the basin. We also are developing and are hoping to advertise before the end of this year a transmission RFP that will call for a new corridor of power into the basin, something that no other utility, to our knowledge, is proposing to do, and we're looking for partners on that as well. So we are leading in all of these areas. But one of the areas that is incredibly important from a reliability standpoint and resiliency standpoint, particularly for Los Angeles, is the LA 100 finding that we have to have local generation. And we'll talk about that on the next slide. There is, I think, sometimes a misperception that when we talk about local generation, the capacity that we need is very different from the utilization. Utilization, the primary source of our energy for the foreseeable future in the coming decade, is going to continue to be renewable energy. So as we adopt more and more renewable energy like Elan and sign more and more power purchase agreements, the utilization of our in-basin, our local generation, goes down. But the importance of that generation goes up. We've seen that time and time again. Sadly, as many folks have mentioned during the comment period, we have wildfires that impact the city of Los Angeles and parts outside of the city of Los Angeles. And when those wildfires do impact the city, it is very often, and this happened in 2019 with the Saddle Ridge Fire. It happened in 2009 with the Sayer Fire, the Blue Cut Fire, and during the Palisades Fire, it impacted our transmission capacity as well. And during those periods, during those emergencies, we had to rely on in-basin capacity. So the utilization goes way down, importance goes way up. And it's not just wildfires, there's high-heat days, there's earthquakes, and there's other, you know, high-impact, low-frequency events. And one of the really important issues that is, you know, is important to emphasize, we have to build, and I mentioned this, dozens of local transmission projects. When we upgrade a transmission project to bring renewable power to the city, we have to shut that transmission line down. And when we do that, we're more vulnerable when we upgrade it. So we have to have that local capacity. So the need for local generation, including Scattergood, is there to ensure that, especially over the coming decades, we ensure that we've got that capacity as an insurance policy to make sure that we have reliable power. Now, despite, and given that history, the studies that we've done, the outreach that we've done, there was a recent request a little over a year ago by stakeholders and by our city council to say, we understand that, and we understand that that can be a little bit counterintuitive, that you need this project and it is a core piece, a foundational piece of your renewable transformation. But we want to have you relook at alternatives. So the original $20 million LA 100 study, you know, arrived at that conclusion, again with our internal engineers and the scientists from the National Renewable Energy Lab. But we also said, okay, we'll relook at this. We'll expand upon that and drill down and look at potential alternatives and have it done again through a third party, through the National Renewable Energy Lab. And we'll do it in a continued transparent way, engaging our advisory group. And so we brought on the National Renewable Energy Lab to look at different alternatives to Scattergood. You know, could we theoretically build so much transmission that it obviates the need for that, for Scattergood? Could we do fuel cells? There's concerns, there's questions around NOx emissions, which I'll address in a little bit. Could we look at fuel cells? Because there's no NOx emissions with fuel cells. Could we look at energy storage, demand response, and combination options? And we've looked at all of those. And for, you know, to be very clear, almost all of this we have to do. Almost all of this we have to do. To say that energy storage is not a replacement for Scattergood does not mean we don't need energy storage. In fact, we just commissioned 1,200 megawatts of energy storage, and we continue to incentivize that locally and at the utility scale. And of course, with demand response, we just saw the approval by this board of that. So to replace Scattergood, there is no alternative based on the findings from the updated Renewable Energy Lab study. But again, we need these resources in other areas. So that brings us to Scattergood specifically. Scattergood serves a load pocket in our service territory. And it is currently, there are several units there. Some of the units are very old from the '60s. They use ocean water cooling, and we cannot use those units after 2029. We are proposing to replace those units and build a hydrogen-ready unit at Scattergood. That area will see a significant, and is seeing a significant growth in energy demand. We are proposing a little bit over 300-megawatt unit at that facility. And again, we want to make sure that this unit is hydrogen-ready for an eventual supply of hydrogen to this area. Our expectation and our plan is currently for December 2029. A summary of milestones. The RFP for this project was released in late 2024. The EIR is for your consideration today. The RFP, the Request for Proposals, will close in November. And upon evaluation of that competitive solicitation, we will then bring that to this board to consider the adoption of that and that award. So today, to be clear, no dollars are being proposed to be committed. Today is for the Environmental Impact Report. Later in 2026, we would bring the RFP for this board's consideration. Design and construction would then continue in the subsequent years with an expectation, and I hope that this will be in service by the end of 2029. The Environmental Impact Report, we had extended the public comment period. This opened in October 31st of last year, so just about a year ago. And the required timeframe was 45 days. We extended that five total times for a total of 159-day extension. We, of course, consistent with Sequa, ensured that the appropriate folks were notified and conducted the appropriate public meetings. But above and beyond all of that, we have had years of sustained engagement at various levels and not just through the required channels. We've had over 100 meetings with stakeholders. That includes, not, again, as I mentioned, not just the public comment period, but through our LA 100 study effort, through our advisory group meetings, not just with the original LA 100 study, but every time we update our power plans, we continue our engagement with those advisory group members. And through the NREL follow-on assessment of alternatives, we continue that external engagement. And so I want to emphasize the strong belief that I have that there's no other study in our recent history, that we have, no other project in our recent history that is more grounded in research and science and has gone through as rigorous of a public outreach effort as this project, as Scattergood.
Jason, can you characterize the public participation in the NREL revision study process for me?
Yeah, during our 2024, we used to call this our Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan, which is, it essentially is our power plan, which we've rebranded to our LA 100 plan. It's the same plan. Through that process, we've provided updates to our advisory group. We've also, at the request of coalitions of stakeholders, of coalitions of community-based organizations, met with them on an ad hoc basis. We've also made staff and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory engineers and scientists available to them to ask questions. So we have, as I mentioned, tried to ensure that, and by the way, all of these meetings and all these presentations that we give are all posted on our website, all, you know, we keep a historical log of all of that. So if there are advisory group members that come into, and we often see turnovers come into this, you know, and don't have the detailed background, they have all of the materials there from the previous years. On the Environmental Impact Report, we received over 100 comments, 101 comments. A lot of the areas of concern, you've heard much of them from some of the public comment period today. That also includes green hydrogen availability. And I do want to take a moment to emphasize that there were some questions about the certainty of when and if hydrogen supply would be available. And we believe it's totally reasonable to expect that by the time this project is built, that there will be some type of hydrogen supply. However, to predict exactly what that would look like, I think, you know, remains to be seen. The fact that certain hydrogen development efforts across the region are underway is not new information, so I want to emphasize that. I also want to emphasize, from the environmental justice and frontline community perspective, this project will have, will not have an impact to disadvantaged communities. In fact, this project is foundational, again, as I mentioned, foundational to ensure reliability and resilience, not just for reliable power, but to ensure that we can continue to incorporate renewable energy onto our grid. We also saw comments from generation capacity and grid reliability, which we believe has been adequately addressed in the response letter, but also thoroughly and over the course of the years, from a public engagement standpoint, we believe that we've demonstrated this through the LA 100 study and the subsequent studies and our own power plans. And the alternatives, as I mentioned, there was concern about the alternatives addressed in the EIR. And I do want to emphasize that the EIR did, in fact, look at alternatives, and that was above and beyond the separate National Renewable Energy Lab alternatives study that we did. So we believe that we have adequately and very thoroughly addressed alternatives, and not just specific alternatives to the technology, but holistically. Every time that we look at our power plan, we look at all of the elements that it takes to create a power system. And so we, through the original LA 100 study and through our follow-on power system updates, we constantly look at holistic ways to address our power needs. The list of alternatives that were evaluated is in front of you. The recommended alternative is Alternative Four, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the mitigation measures that we will have to undertake. During construction, there are some less-than-significant impacts if the mitigation monitoring and reporting program is adopted. That includes during the construction and also during the commissioning of the units. There are significant impacts during operation which can be mitigated by the elimination of or the disqualification of vendor B. So this is the entirety of the, you know, major mitigation efforts that would be needed to be undertaken through this effort. So that brings us to the end of the presentation, and I'll just emphasize two areas. To restate, leading on climate, we're 10% of the state of California or roughly 1% of the state, the entire country. So us leading on climate has an impact if we can do this successfully. If we can decarbonize and transition to a clean energy future in a way that is reliable, is resilient, is equitable, and is affordable, then we will be a leader and we can influence other utilities and other cities and other states to adopt aggressive decarbonization efforts. If we sacrifice reliability, we will not be a leader, we will be a cautionary tale. The last thing that I'll mention is the opportunity that we have, the unique opportunity that we have in the city of Los Angeles. We heard a number of comments around local air quality impacts. Not just carbon, not just carbon emissions, which we are making massive strides on, but local air quality impacts. Power plants in and near the city of Los Angeles from LADWP account for less than 1% of local NOx emissions, less than 1%. In the coming years, in the coming five, 10, 15 years, that 1%, it'll be a fraction of that 1%. Not that that doesn't matter, you know, NOx emissions matters, but 90% of local NOx emissions comes from transportation, comes from buildings, comes from ports. For us to play a role in attacking that 90%, we have the ability to do that. We have significant electric vehicle rebates, building electrification rebates, and partnerships with the Port of Los Angeles to help modernize and help decarbonize and, you know, transition away from local polluting resources. To do that, we have to be reliable, we have to be resilient. So not only do we have an opportunity to lead on climate and carbon emissions, but we have the opportunity to have a massive impact on local air quality improvements through the electrification of transportation, building, and ports. So with that, I appreciate the time. I know it's been an extremely long day, so I really sincerely appreciate the time that this board has given to us. And I'm here to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay, good, seeing no questions. Jim, you got comments?
Yes, thank you. President Katz, a few comments. And we've provided a letter to the board in advance of this item. From our standpoint, we did review the modeling that went into the findings about the need for the modernization proposal to replace the Scattergood facility with another stationary generation unit. Found that to be reasonable based on the information provided in DDP's extensive modeling effort backed by the NREL model and feels that that is a reasonable determination in supportive of LA 100 decarbonization goals. However, we do also see that there are substantial and complex costs and timelines. We highlight two things, the capital expenditure costs or CapEx costs, of which we think are likely to be in excess of the initial quote of $800 million. Given now the costs for gas turbines have been accelerating in size roughly from one year ago. We commissioned an independent study that evaluated turbine costs and found that those have gone up 2 to 3X since even just a year ago. And second, the delivery timelines for those turbines have been extending. One of the commentators we heard today saying that those potentially are in the five to six. We've even seen six to eight years for delivery costs and are concerned about the timeline for being able to meet the ones through cooling regulation because of this. We have evaluated the risks associated with the green hydrogen market and do find that there are risks, notwithstanding some of what's been commented today. We find three areas of risks. Certainly, when you look at hydrogen fuel costs, those costs are roughly seven to 10 times what you see for the prevailing prices of natural gas, which would be the incumbent fuel at Scattergood. Second, we see some risks associated with hydrogen actually being able to be delivered to this site insofar as there may not be an adequate policy support mechanism to enable hydrogen pipelines to be delivered here to be able to supply the fuel that Scattergood needs. And of course, we've been eyeing, like much of you, the elimination of Department of Energy grants. Our analysis, based on evaluation of the market, is that this may shift, but most likely will not cancel Los Angeles or California's commitment and progress towards hydrogen. We did identify a few recommendations based on these. And at the high level, we would recommend first that we think that the costs and the timelines are going to become a little bit more clear once the submissions are done under the RFP. And this will help the department understand, you know, what it's facing. And given that there are obviously provisions for confidentiality and processes for procurement, we do recommend that the department come back and provide an interim report to the board about what they found to be able to provide some situational awareness to the board and not just be confronted with a single proposal to be voted on mid-next year. We also think that the department should focus on enabling more hydrogen infrastructure deployment here in the region and either continuing or accelerating its efforts to work with hydrogen development community so that hydrogen may actually be deployed at the site. And we think that the department should provide regular reports to the board on hydrogen availability in the region and development timelines for that so that the board can understand the volumes that may come to the Scattergood facility in the timeline. Finally, we do think that there are some opportunities for leveraging cross-departmental partnerships to help to reduce and manage load that may increase the need for the facility operations, such as modernizations at LAX, Hyperion, and the Port of Los Angeles. We think that mitigating some of the load increases associated with these projects will be helpful for managing the need for the facility going forward. Thank you.
No comments. Questions by board members? What is the will of the board? Oh, wants to, of course. Oh, wants to, of course.
Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll comment. I just want to say that obviously this is a very complex and complicated issue, balancing demand needs, trying to keep LA 100 on track, protecting our communities. There are some things that can't be traded off. And so obviously, we've spent a lot of time at the board level, at the organization level, in partnership with, you know, federal agencies and laboratories, our community groups, and really an unprecedented research process to understand all of the wide-ranging implications of this project. I am particularly concerned, I think, from a fiscal standpoint, about our ability to execute this thing on time and on budget, and so I really appreciate the rate pair advocate suggestions about how we check in on this project going forward, especially knowing that I won't be at the dais. I don't have any additional questions. I think all of my initial questions on sort of explosive risk, NOx, greenhouse gas emissions, and all those things were answered by staff both in the presentation and in previous conversations here at the JFB. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I can add to that. First of all, thank you Commissioner McGraw for being here for this particularly long board meeting despite your impending departure from the board. I know that, you know, throughout your time on the board, as I mentioned in the prior meeting when we gave you a more formal farewell, I have been extremely impressed with the attention to detail that you have brought to every decision before this board. I would like to echo your comments about the extensive research process that the department has undertaken. I also have asked many, many questions over many, many months. But that said, the continued extensive public comment today, both in support and against this project, does show clearly how complex and challenging this transition to clean energy is and the challenges that are still ahead of us as we address reliability, resilience, and equity and environmental concerns. So while I do acknowledge the extensive study and stakeholder engagement process that the department has gone through, I also really want to acknowledge the remaining concerns that were raised today by the community and in public comment. I've met with some of the stakeholders, I have friends and colleagues on both sides of the comments today. Having met with some of the stakeholders here today in more extensive conversation, I also want to really acknowledge the time and research and thoughtful analysis that went into these comments. These were not offhand comments that were made, you know. I know that the nonprofits that were represented today and community groups have really done their diligence on this project as well, so I want to acknowledge that and say that regardless of the vote today, that we, and I'll certainly speak for myself, I have clearly heard these concerns regarding safety, NOx emissions, technological uncertainty, and water use with this project, and that I remain committed to focusing on these and examining these issues and addressing them as the project moves forward. So wanted to say that before any vote today, and just thank everyone for their time. I know it's been a long day, and many of you have been here for many hours, listening to different perspectives that have been shared, so thank you all for that. And then I will give it to President Katz.
By the way, George, if you're concerned and want to stay, we can fix this. Don't worry.
Might be a good reason for you not to leave the board.
Never say never, dude. It's just, we can work on that. Is there a motion on this?
I'll move to approve.
All right. And I'll second it. Want to take all the roll, please?
Commissioner Narikatz?
Aye.
President Richard Katz?
Aye.
Vice President McGraw?
Aye.
Three eyes motion adopted.
Okay, that motion passes. We have a couple more housekeeping things to take care of, normally would have been done about 10 o'clock this morning, but we have the remaining items that we can take a block vote on. Do you have the numbers, Shante?
Yes, we have two minutes. Item K1, K2, N2, N3, N4, N7, N8, N9, N10, N11, N12, N13, and N14. And 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Okay, motion to approve.
We have to get rate pair comments on 15.
George, we got a vote. We can get this vote.
What?
Yeah, we're moving to vote, right?
I think yes, but Commissioner McGraw was noting that there were rate pair comments on a couple of these items before we do the vote, if we can take those.
But the Scattergood we voted on.
Yeah, no, no, I am concerned about our quorum though. Commissioner McGraw, are you going to be, is that okay? Do you have enough time?
I have 25 minutes. How quickly can you speak?
I think we'll be okay.
There's only one item that we would like to speak on, and that is item number 16.
Great, let's hear those, if you allow me, let's hear those comments briefly, and then we'll do the block vote.
Great.
Thank you. Rate pair advocate office has identified item number 16 associated with the approval of a contract for underground conduits and substructures by Dody Brothers Construction Company for a term of one year. This is a significant expenditure item of upwards of $104 million. We have done analysis associated with this contractor and identify that this project is very significant for a contractor of this size. However, this is very important work that needs to get done, and have met with the department about the process that went into contractor selection. Given the need for the department to maintain both its progress in doing this work, as well as maintain high standards for safety and for contract performance, we think it's incumbent upon the department to provide extra support to this contractor in the process of execution, as well as additional oversight to make sure that this contractor, who will likely be bringing in subs from other parts of its member companies, that there be some additional opportunities for engaging and for really kind of a belt and suspenders approach, you know, on this one. We're looking at a one-year contract performance with some people that have never contracted with the department before, probably with folks that have not worked in Los Angeles before, and they're not accustomed and attuned to DDP's requirements. We're also selecting contractors because of poor safety performance on the prior contract, and would just recommend that there be some additional oversight and support for this going forward. We don't take a recommendation for approval or not, but we do recommend that that consideration be taken into account.
And on those points that I also met with, talked to David earlier, and we've talked to some other folks who are involved from our, from the company's standpoint, from the utility standpoint. We all obviously take safety very seriously, and, you know, I do have concerns as well, but I think that by highlighting it now, one, we put the company on notice, but also some of the additional things that Tim's talked about, and we have some other things that Dave and I had talked about that can be put into this contract to increase scrutiny and check on the performance and check on the compliance. So with those amendments, I think it addresses what Tim brought up also.
That's correct. We're not necessarily recommending that they go back and revise the negotiated contract, but that there be additional safeguards by the department associated with oversight and support of the contractor.
Exactly right. And along with that, and a regular report back to this board, you know, say quarterly on how that's all going along. David?
Yes, sir, I'll take that action on it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And do we need any formal language for the vote, or it's just acknowledged that we have kind of adopted that action moving forward for that item? Shante?
In the minutes, it will be marked as a discussion that was held.
Thank you. Okay, well, in that case, oh, I'm sorry, there's general public comment.
Well, we can take the vote now, and then we can do the public comment after.
Do you mind if we do the public comment first? Seems a little disingenuous.
Okay, that's fine. You can do it.
In case there is comment on any of these items.
Just a general comment, but yes.
But we'll make sure it's within the framework of time that we have.
Yes.
It's not a filibuster, so.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Okay, whose comments are we looking for?
Board President, do we reduce the time down to 30 seconds? One minute?
I think one minute is, we have time for, we'll do one minute, normal time.
Public comment is now open at this time. Speakers, please be mindful that you will be allowed one minute and one minute only to public comment. We have approximately eight commenters. The first speaker will be William Funderburke. After William will be Santina Pugliese.
William Funderburke, senior advisor and board member of the PermaCity Foundation, founder, board member, and general partner of the $300 million Cool Capital Fund, will be the largest climate finance fund in the city of Los Angeles in history. I yield my time to Margarita Montañez, la madre de Cindy Montañez.
Okay, anybody else? How's that?
Margarita's going to speak, I think.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Buenas tardes, voy a decirlo en español. Mi nombre es, buenas tardes, señor presidente, Mr. Katz. Oh my God, se me olvida. Pero bueno, mi nombre es Margarita Montañez y he venido ahora a apoyar a la, what's her name, the equity metrics. Cindy trabajaba con Williams, entonces aquí estoy para soportarlos.
Good afternoon, my name is Margarita Montañez, and I'm here today to support equity metrics. My daughter Cindy worked with Williams, and I'm here to support this.
También quiero darle las gracias a algunos que tal vez hayan trabajado con ella. Muchas gracias a todos por su apoyo. Ella falleció el 21 de octubre del 2023.
I also want to thank everyone that worked with Cindy. She passed away October 21st of 2023.
Ella le gustaba mucho el ambiente, los árboles. Por eso trabajó siete años en Free People. Para mí es un honor estar aquí y darle las gracias por todo lo que la apoyaron.
Cindy loved the trees and the environment, and she just wants to thank everybody that worked with her, and that she's very honored to be here today.
Thank you very much. Muchísimas gracias.
Can I ask for a translation when I respond? My Spanish is not so great, and I just, I'll be more comfortable in English. I want to say thank you for being here, Margarita. It's very good to see you. I haven't seen you since the garden dedication. I'll let you translate first.
Gracias que no la ha visto desde la dedicación del jardín. Le quiere dar muchas gracias y que le da placer verla aquí hoy.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Bueno, gracias por todo. Yo siempre los recuerdo.
Sí.
Siempre, algunos me conocieron desde antes que andaba con ella. Siempre.
Gracias.
La extraño y la vamos a extrañar, pero sé que está en un buen lugar.
Gracias. I want to say that Cindy was loved and a friend to many here in the department, both when she was at the department, but also just as a champion for environment in this city. We remember her and think of her often, and we're grateful for her leadership in environment and equity, and for Margarita being here, and former Commissioner Funderburke being here to ensure that the board continues this focus on equity and environment moving forward. Sorry, that was kind of long, but hopefully you can.
Le quiere dar las gracias por estar aquí hoy y que recordamos mucho a Cindy y el trabajo que ella hizo aquí también. Es un honor que usted está aquí y muchas gracias por todo.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Es un honor para mí también estar aquí y ojalá alguna ocasión volvamos a vernos. Muchísimas gracias, los agradezco.
Gracias.
She says thank you, and she hopes to come by for another occasion sometime soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, Priscilla. The next speaker is Santina Pugliese, who will be followed by Sung Anderson. Santina? Sung Anderson, are you here? The next speaker will be Lauren Rose. Lauren, are you here? The next speaker will be Leon Kaplan. Leon, are you here? The next speaker will be Sonia Verhagen. Sonia, are you here? Public comment is closed at this time. Board President?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Should I make a motion?
Please.
All right, motion to approve items two, three, four, seven, eight, and then nine through 20.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded without objection to all three members being recorded. I vote, that shall be the order.
Motion adopted.
Motion adopted. Do you need the minutes from, okay. A motion and a second on the minutes for the previous motion also?
Motion.
Second. Without objection, all three members being recorded, I vote. Thank you.
Motion for both of those minutes, by the way.
Correct. Joe, you have something?
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner. On behalf of our CEO, Janice Quinones, I had wanted to share just three items today that are very brief. One, the first one I want to turn over to Ann Santilli for some very good news on the financial side.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. On October 28th, Fitch Rating advised both the water system and the power system rating outlook. They revised it from negative to stable. The rationale cited in their reports for the credit change is due to the decline in the near-term likelihood of LADWP incurring materially significant financial liability related to the Palisades property fire. LADWP will be issuing water bonds next week, and we have requested ratings for Fitch for the water bonds. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ann. I'd also like to ask Dave Hanson, he has two items to share with you. One, an important recognition of someone who's given a career service to the department and wanted to recognize and thank him for his service.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Marciano Navar, could you please join us at the podium so we may gaze upon you? So this is Marciano Navar, we call him Rocky, and he is leaving us November 1st for a well-deserved retirement. He is currently the Director of Power Construction and Maintenance and will always be my friend. In recognition of 35 years of dedication, service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to excellence, we would like to congratulate you on your well-deserved retirement from your friends and colleagues in the Power Construction and Maintenance Division and the power system, November 1st, 2025. And here's one of my favorite quotes from Rocky, "No one can do everything, but together we can achieve anything." Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you, sir. Love you, Mark. Congratulations.
We've heard a lot today, so I'll be very brief. I want to thank God for the opportunity for me to work here, for guiding me through challenges and surrounding me with great people. To my wife, Laura, thank you for your love, patience, support through the long days and late nights, and for allowing me to do what I love. After 35 years with LADWP, I'm filled with gratitude, pride, and humility. From maintaining equipment to restoring power and leading through emergencies and mentoring future leaders, it's been an incredible journey. But more than the work, it's the people I remember most. The crews, supervisors, engineers, support staff, union partners, and leaders, you've all shaped my path. I've learned from you, leaned on you, and been inspired by your dedication in public service. As I retire now, knowing LADWP is in good hands, keep pushing forward, support one another, remember the impact your work has on millions. Thank you for your memories and friendships. Be safe, have fun, and may God bless you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Navar. Rocky, thank you very much, and congratulations. The fact that this was such a long board meeting with so many important decisions just speaks to the weight of the work that you've done here at the department, and we are really grateful for your decades of service. Thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you very much.
I have one final item. That is that, at the request of our CEO, DDP is launching the first-ever annual safety week from November 3rd to the 7th. That's next week with the theme "Safety Always, No Power." That's next week with the theme "Safety Always, No Compromise," and it's sponsored by the Office of Corporate Health and Safety. This is to reinforce the prioritization of safety within our workforce. We will also hold a department-wide safety stand-down on November 6th, the first one of its kind, I believe, department-wide ever. All employees are invited to take a moment to recognize and discuss the importance of safety, safe workplace practices during the moment of silence next week, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Anybody have anything else? Is there anything we haven't covered today? Without objection, then we will be, we're not doing closed sessions, right?
I have some things I would desperately like to do.
We have nine minutes.
We have nine minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the voter abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code. Thank you.
I have another meeting I can't skip. All right. I'm just going to get my office tonight.[833.25]